Thank you all. I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 17th, 2021. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Trent.
Chair Quilisi, do you have your mic on?
I have a light on.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
I don't know. Yeah. Everybody hear me all right now? Commissioner Trent, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, unpeached, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Public Communications, people who wish to speak to the Planning Commission about items not on the agenda. We have only one agenda item tonight, the concept review for the Ojai Town Square. Is there anyone present here or in the waiting room, outside, or whatever, who wishes to speak on an item of city business not on the agenda, other than this proposed project? Okay, great. Seeing none, we'll move on.
May I? Outside, may I? Just a short comment. That's not on the agenda?
If you're, if you want to speak, come to the podium, please.
Inside, you're saying?
Yes.
I can't do it outside?
The microphone, right here in the front.
There's an, yeah, there is one outside, Chair Quilisi.
All right, then, please identify yourself.
I'm Scott Willing, citizen of Ojai since 93. I just would like to know if there's going to be any proposals to increase the enforcement of noise ordinances that I know exist in downtown Ojai, especially due to the amount of traffic now coming through. The noise is unsustainable for the residents anywhere near Ojai downtown, and I think that needs to be addressed, too, but I'll let you go on. Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak on an item other than the proposed project tonight? All right, then, we'll move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We'll start with Vice Chair Nolan.
Chair Quilisi, I've been to the site and I've had no ex parte contact.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lottis?
I'm familiar with the site and I've had no ex parte contacts.
Okay. Commissioner Trent?
Familiar with the site, no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bennett?
I'm familiar with the site and I did talk for one minute with Superintendent of Schools today about one issue, which was trying to, I was trying to determine how much money they thought they were going to be able to raise from this project. I was trying to find out the amount, and she said that they had just gotten a report on it, and I thought she was going to be here and report on it tonight, so.
Yep, there's a.
It was literally a one-minute conversation.
Meeting tonight, and so we have a representative from the school district, I'm sorry, are you the district council? Okay, very good. And finally, I did a walkthrough of the property today. I entered off of the gate at Ojai Avenue, walked through and back out the gate at Aliso, and I spoke for a few minutes with Mr. Carl Rumpa. I understand he's the warehouse manager. And he just explained to me what of the other buildings, other than the landmark stuff that we all know about, were there and their function. So, that's my ex parte contact. All right. Now we're to our discussion item, and I want to make a few things clear here, and I imagine we'll hear some of the same from staff again. First of all, this is a concept review. There will be no decision on the project by the Planning Commission this evening. That comes at a later public hearing, if such occurs, called a design review permit or a plan development permit, or one of those things. Tonight, we are here to hear from the applicants, to hear from the public, and to hear eventually from the planning commissioners as to thoughts about the proposed project. I hope all of you have read the package so that you're working from complete knowledge on that. Second, I see a number of signs. Signs are free speech. However, if you hold them up and impede other person's ability to follow the meeting, that's not allowed. Put it on the floor. If you want to hold it up like this, like this, that's fine, you're not blocking anyone else's view. So, thank you for abiding by that. Lastly, I guess, we are going to have one speaker at a time in this room. If you feel duty-bound to stand up and yell something, you will be asked to sit down, be quiet, or otherwise vacate the room. And to introduce the discussion item tonight, our Community Development Director, Lucas Seibert. Lucas?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, my name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director here with the City of Ojai. I want to say good evening. I want to thank all for tonight's item regarding a proposal at the school district site located at 414 East Ojai Avenue. The matter for discussion tonight is a concept review, which provides an opportunity for the community and the commission to provide critical feedback regarding the proposal to the school board and the school board developers, which is S V S Development LLC. As Chair Quilisi had just mentioned, and I'll reiterate, no decision will be made tonight. The applicant is here tonight and has prepared a PowerPoint presentation. Once they have presented, the community will have an opportunity to speak on this matter. First in person, inside first, and then an opportunity for those individuals wishing to speak outside, and then there'll be an opportunity for those that want to speak virtually through Zoom. As the Chair had mentioned, please limit, or actually, I'll mention it tonight, please limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will follow up with questions and comments to the applicant. Let's start off by having the applicant team introduce themselves.
My name is Brian Veat. I'm a civil structural engineer, also a real estate developer, done a lot of work with hotels and office buildings. I'm a builder also, I'm building multifamily right now, a lot of experience in commercial real estate. I'm also a former planning commissioner at the county level, so I really appreciate this body being here tonight, and I also really appreciate everyone who's here, and this is part of the process. And I'm going to give a little intro later, but not right now, so I'll pass the torch to our local resident and much better-looking face of our project, Christine Overaker.
Hi, I'm terrible on microphones. This is okay? Yeah. It's also kind of weird with the mask, but I think it's okay. So, yeah, I'm Christine Overaker. Nice to see everyone here. Too quiet? Louder? Oh, boo. Oh, well, that's kind of hurtful. I'm a person who has feelings, too, and I do live here in Ojai with you, so that does kind of hurt my feelings, but that's fine. We're here to discuss all of this tonight with you guys, so this is part of the process, is building something cool together, and there's certainly nothing that's set in stone, which is why we're here. Anyway, I digress. I'm a designer and artist, and, yeah, here to create something awesome on the site, so. Hi. Hi. What?
Okay, and we also have Brad Schnell here, who's an architect. Brad? Just, okay. We also have our team from Jensen Engineering. Suzanne Cooper runs Jensen, and Tanner Shelton is going to be presenting tonight. We're supposed to have our traffic engineer here. Looks like he got caught in traffic.
Here he is.
Oh, here we go. Daryl Nelson, thank you. Welcome, Daryl. Good, good timing. I think that's it for our team, Lucas. Thank you.
Good evening, and I'm Joel Kirschenstein, and under board's appointed Real Property Negotiator, and we were brought into this about two years ago, after the district had started the process, when the new superintendent came on board. I certainly want to welcome everyone that's here this evening, and we are here to more than just listen, but we're also here to take notes, to make changes and recommendations to the developer on amending the plan that was submitted to staff. And regarding staff, I really want to thank Lucas for his very, very hard work and his staff on a very tough project, and it's nice to get a non-controversial project to work on for 10, 11 months, but he's done a great job, and we certainly appreciate that. So, we look forward to listening, and I have some additional comments later on in the evening for our presentation, and I just thought it would be, it's also important to note that we are co-applicants. The school district is a separate entity in the application, but because they own the property and because they will continue to own the property, right now it's proposed as a ground lease, not a sale, even though they may want to consider a portion if there's some issues associated with the ground lease, but as of now, it's a ground lease. So, we're co-applicants because the district has to sign off on what the developer is proposing as a concept. So, that is the framework, and then I'll get into some of the other specifics, and now comes to Mr. Soldani.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is David Soldani. I'm with the Law Firm of Atkinson-Andelson, and I'm legal counsel for the district in this matter. It's great to see the level of interest. It's great to see all the bright, shiny faces in the community. We really sincerely look forward to hearing your feedback and your ideas, and we are here to listen, as well as to share information. So, thank you for this opportunity to the Planning Commission, and thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you. So, I'd also ask, are there any board members or employees of the school district that attend tonight, either physically tonight, here, or outside, or virtually, online? If you could raise your hand and just identify yourself. Thank you. Okay, so, in order to allow people to stretch their legs, we have allotted for a break after about 90 minutes. Once we go through the presentation, start hearing from the community. Also, if you haven't done so already, please fill out a green speaker card if you could raise one of those cards. It's at the back of the room, and hand those to Sherry Herbrook, located at the front here, and then they'll be distributed to the Chair, Chair Quilisi, who will invite individuals to come forward. And for those located outside watching on TV, please hand those to Mara. If Mara's back there, she can raise her hand, and she'll get those to the front here as well. So with that, I would turn it over to the applicant to go through the presentation.
Good evening again. What I'd like to do is just go through very quickly so that the audience has an awareness of the background related to the school district and surplus property. The school district is a state agency, even though they are governed by a local school board, which is a local school board, but they are basically a state agency. They are required to follow a very strict statutory process when it comes to their surplus property, and they have been involved with that piece of property in the process since around 1979, 1980. And what the law calls for, and David can certainly comment on that, is a surplus property advisory committee. That advisory committee is in the statute, has to have local citizens, members of the planning staff, the local planning authority, and any other interested parties that could be adjacent to the property. They have done that twice. They have two surplus property advisory committee meetings, and that is a very important scrutiny that has to go into the process. School districts are encouraged by the California State Legislature to develop their surplus property, to either lease it and/or sell it from a fiduciary responsibility standpoint once it's declared surplus. And when a school district goes from 4,000 students to 2,000 students, they all have certain amount of surpleness. The California Department of Education encourages what you're attending this evening. The State Board of Education encourages what you're seeing this evening, what you're participating in. And the State Board has become much more liberal with their waivers recently, waiving the bid process so that people like myself and David can negotiate directly with folks like this for the development and/or disposition of surplus property. So, the board has a real fiduciary responsibility to deal with this issue when they're facing surpleness, and then looking at how to deal with their assets. The primary purpose of this process is to enhance the preschool, the alternative high school, to remove the transportation services and other industrial uses that are on that site from downtown, because that's certainly not compatible with the city's general plan, and to find and/or upgrade the district administrative services to 21st century facilities with enhanced technology that can reach out into the homes, to the schools, in other words, to create a very different image than what currently exists in those facilities. And also, if and when they do generate the funds, the income that relieves the general fund from maintenance, from deferred maintenance, from other facility-type expenditures, so that there's more financing in the general fund for things like salaries, fringe benefits, and so on. So, it enhances that whole process. It relieves the general fund. So, again, once they go through the process to do their relocation of their educational programs, then comes the RFP, the Request for Proposal process, which they went through. All of that had been agendized, they had been noticed, they had been at open meetings, and then comes the developer selection process, and that's the folks that you see here this So, the message for everyone this evening is not only to listen, but the responsibility for the development is not with the school district. The responsibility for the development is with the local planning authority, which is the Planning Commission and the City Council. The school district's responsibility is what David and I are doing, which is negotiating ground lease, negotiating exclusive right to negotiate, and making sure the RFP process remains in place. But the planning authority is with the folks that you see here. So, we are here to listen to the Planning Commission after they receive the input on how to amend our project. We have already started that process because we had heard through the school board that the 200-room hotel was not acceptable as a 200-room hotel. May not make you all that happy, or it may, some of you. We have already negotiated it down to 175-room hotel. However, if the hotel disappears, if that's what the wisdom of the community is, and it's replaced with residential or other type uses, then so be it. The school board does not want to get into any kind of a melee with the community. The hotel is a very, a boutique hotel has been considered and approved by other school districts, but that's up to what the Planning Commission and the City Council wants. The school board cannot, they're not a zoning and land use authority, so there's some misconception about that. And whatever these folks give us as direction, that will be the direction of the project. But what is not acceptable is nothing. We can't, we're not, the school board is not interested, it just has nothing there. That's a great opportunity for them to generate income for their educational programs, pay for the relocation in six or seven years, and then the rest of the proceeds go into all the remaining facilities of the school district. So, I'm going to stop right there. That's the overview of the background and the process and what we're here for tonight, which is to listen and amend the plan accordingly.
Okay, maybe I can put some people at ease here. I'd like to convey my gratitude for all of us to be here. This is very near and dear to my heart. I'm a product of public schools. My parents were both high school teachers, so this is really a way for me to help try to give something back. I've already introduced our team, and I'm very happy to have such a highly qualified team here today. I just want to kind of outline this process a little bit, take a step back, maybe cool things down a tad, explain the concept, answer some questions, and primarily listen, okay? Why are we here? Meaning, "we," why are we here? Because of this RFP process that the board went through, when they realized they had this surplus land that was given to them by a prior generation, that they're trying to steward for a future generation. So, that Request for Proposal is basically just a fancy word to solicit proposals to lease the property and develop it. And in that RFP, there were certain terms, and why they chose us is spelled out in that document, which is a public document, and one of those terms is rent, because the school district has a shortfall because of declining enrollment, because of their ongoing obligation to the schools. So, how do we best do that? That's what we're all here to decide. So, we won the RFP, so we won the right to spend years and lots of money trying to help. We've devoted almost three years just to get to this point, where the city and the community decide what's best for this parcel, and if we can, to help catalyze that. It's really not about us. We know that the members of this community have, you know, questions and concerns about this proposal. We know that some people really support the hotel idea, and the reason is TOT, because it also goes to the city. So, that's one use where it could benefit the school district and the city commensurately. Over a quarter of the city's revenues are from TOT, even more than property tax. So, I'm not saying that it should be a hotel. We actually have no dog in this fight. If everyone here decides that you don't want a hotel, I'm absolutely fine, and we are absolutely fine with that. So, that remains to be discussed, okay? We're not wed to any single use. There's a lot of different uses to consider here. Some people want retail, some people want housing, some people want affordable housing. This is the kind of thing that gets hammered out in this kind of venue, and as I say, as a former planning commissioner, I'm fully aware of that process, and I'm happy to help be this part of it. We are just trying to help the school district do the right thing as fiduciaries for current and future generations of kids, and this parcel, in a sense, has been given to this generation for the next generation, and it's up to all of us to decide what to do with it. And just so you know, we are not pushing for a hotel. Where we are tonight is... Yeah. Where we are tonight is just the starting line. Now, that's not nothing, because if you think about, like, the Olympics, right? Just to get to the starting line takes a lot of dedication, time, effort. That's where we are. So, we're, I will be as surprised as anyone in this room to see where this project goes, and I will be elated to get some kind of project that works for all the different constituents. So, we believe there's a win-win here. We believe with some luck and some courage, and by working together and some patience, we'll find it. And thank you. And I'm going to just turn it over next to Tanner, who's going to talk about a starting point for a concept that will be developed via a robust public process going forward. So, Tanner Shelton from Jensen.
Good evening, everyone. I believe we should have a...
We need the mic on.
And the microphone, yes. And how would I?
There, I think you're on. Tanner, you want to sit here and assist the audience?
Bottom on? I'm good? Okay, great, thank you. Yes, we're waiting, we're waiting for a PowerPoint. I'm sorry, everyone, and I'm sorry I have to turn my back to you all.
Tanner, sit here.
Sit around.
Come here.
Sit around. Do you want me to go there? I'll go there, okay. Joel and I are going to swap.
Awesome. Who's advancing the slides? I don't know. Where's the laptop, dude?
Sorry for the, sorry for the technical difficulties. Oh, here we go.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you. Oh, you got it. Perfect. Now that works. Swap here so I can see it. Yeah, thank you. All right, everyone, here we go. It's a little better. Hi, everyone. My name is Tanner Shelton. I'm with Jensen Design and Survey. I'm a land use planner for that organization. We've been retained by the developer and by the school district to assist with this project. Also with me this evening is Suzanne Cooper from our office. She's our company president and the civil engineer that'll be working on this project going forward. We're located right down the road from you here in the city of Ventura. I'm from Ventura County, grew up in Ventura, so I'd love to see folks out and engage in the planning process like this, because I'm kind of a planning nerd, and it does warm my heart a little bit to see folks here and engage in the process. So, I do genuinely want to thank you all for coming out tonight. If we could go to the next slide, I could just do it myself. There we go. My goal this evening is to just kind of give everyone a quick overview of the preliminary design concept and potential project. First, we're briefly going to discuss the project background, discuss the project process that we're going to be going through moving forward, because as Brian was saying, this is really kind of the starting line for us all. Afterwards, we're going to take a dive into the preliminary project programming and design as it is today. We hope to have a period to hear from you all, the public, I'm looking forward from that, and then answer any questions from the Planning Commission.
I can't hear outside.
Oh. I am in the mic. I think it might just be outside, so I apologize for any technical difficulties going on outside. Maybe we can have someone look into that. All right. The project location, as you all know, is just to the east of downtown Ojai. It's three APNs owned by Ojai Unified School District, and they're outlined in orange in this aerial image here. The site is generally bounded by Ojai Avenue to the south, the Fox Canyon Stormwater Channel, flood control channel to the east, Aliso Street to the north, and Montgomery Street to the west. The site is approximately 8.4 acres in size. We've got three APNs. The site is the home of the Ojai Nordhoff Grammar School, which has been designated as Historic Landmark Number 24 by the City of Ojai. It was designed by Roy C. Wilson, who was a noted local architect who did a lot of projects around here in Ventura County, and he was headquartered out of Santa Paula, actually. The site is currently used as office space by Ojai Unified School District. Chaparral High School is also located, and a district vehicle and storage yards are also on the property. As previously mentioned, the site has been deemed surplus by the Ojai Unified School District. They go through a rather rigorous surplus land process known as a 7-Eleven Committee to deem properties surplus or not surplus. The project background here, in 2018, the school district approved a resolution allowing the district to issue a request for proposals to developers to potentially develop the subject property. In 2019, a joint workshop was held between the school district and city officials regarding potential design concepts and appropriate uses on the site. In 2020, S V S Development LLC entered into an exclusive right to negotiate with the district, and this year, S V S submitted the concept review application. district and this year SBS submitted the concept review application before you all tonight for, to the city to obtain preliminary feedback on the design concept. This slide illustrates the general planning and review process that the project will follow. After concept review, the project will advance to design development. This is where the team takes the comments from the community obtained tonight to further develop the proposed project and program. Right now, the project concept is only a very rough sketch. During the design development stage, the project will be further refined by architects, landscape architects, civil engineer, the district, comments from you, the community, to get us further to where we want to go. Our team will then synthesize the community input we receive during this presentation and, and come back and host a more formal community design workshop at a later date. This will likely take the form of a charrette or town hall style meeting and will provide an opportunity for the public to provide further comments to us once we have a little more refined formal design. At that point, after that, we'll submit to the city for the formal planning submittal. The city will then review the application, including a detailed analysis of compliance with applicable city standards and conduct an environmental review as required by the California Environmental Quality Act in accordance with the laws of the state of California. After these reviews have been completed, the project only then will advance to the planning commission and city council for formal review. As you can see, we are very early in this process right now, extremely early in this process. I think Brian's analogy of getting to the starting line is very appropriate. We've just gotten to that line and we're here at the concept meeting, looking to hear from you, the public, the community about what our first rough sketch is, what you like, what you don't like, and how we can all move forward in a proactive and, and positive manner from this place today. That being said, tonight's goal is to obtain feedback on the preliminary design. Feedback on this conceptual preliminary design today will inform future development and will eventually be incorporated into the formal design submitted to the city at a future date. There are several opportunities after tonight for future public engagement. I'm especially looking forward to coming back and working with you through these issues as we move forward. At a community design workshop, this will allow us a more informal setting to have dialogues once we hear your feedback tonight, come up with something, come back to you and have that conversation as we move forward. With all of this in mind, it's worth stating again that what you're seeing tonight is conceptual in nature. Proposed land uses, architectural design and site layout are extremely flexible at this time. We're just scraping the surface. What really, what this really represents is our first draft or our initial concept draft, if you will. This initial sketch was about getting us to this point and being here with you. We welcome your comments and input on the design tonight. I genuinely believe that my clients want to deliver a project that the community can embrace and support. Our goal here is to deliver a win-win-win, a win for the community, a win for the school district and a win for the city of Ojai. And, and the children too, being the, the school district. Take, with, with, thank you. With, with all this in mind, it's worth stating again that what you're seeing tonight is conceptual in nature. This slide outlines our, our project goals and general approach to the site. As the project moves forward, the intent is continue, is to continue to follow these principles along with any other guiding principles we hear from the community this evening. The project aims to restore and reactivate the historic buildings along Ojai Avenue, to recreate and reinvigorate the east side of downtown by adding a dynamic new development, to acknowledge and celebrate the public interest in the site as evidenced. And everyone in the community has a stake in this property and we do want to acknowledge that moving forward and work with you proactively. Balance a range of uses and needs while creating a sense of place and ensuring the project is financially viable and supports the long-term fiscal needs of the school district. The district, as it is right now, will continue to own the land and as such, developing a use that is profitable and a sustainable investment is of the utmost importance to us all and to the district for the stewardship of the community. The conceptual project program can be broken down into three general categories. We've got commercial, hospitality and residential. This programming is very preliminary and the developer is not committed to any one type of uses outlined on this slide. Should the district, community or city prefer a different blend of land uses on the site than the three general ones listed here, we're open to hearing your feedback and your comments. In addition to commercial hospitality and residential uses, under consideration at the site, the project will contain several community-focused uses. These community-serving uses or similar uses will be incorporated into the project regardless of final programming or unit count. Some examples of this could include a community event center, community gardens, a public square, public plazas and open space and restored historic buildings and most importantly, preserving the existing skate park and park and ride in their current locations. Well, I'm glad skating is supported, that's awesome. This slide shows a conceptual preliminary rendering of the site prepared by the developers. Along Ojai Avenue, the historic school building is preserved and adaptively reused to potentially accommodate a restaurant, retail and community event center. The park and ride and skate park will be preserved in their current locations at the south of the site. Moving northwards into the core of the site, a hotel is tentatively proposed. I want to emphasize that the hotel is an initial idea put forward by the developers. As we begin this process with the community, we want to hear your opinions and feedback on what you think is the preferred uses on this site. I, I hear you. This space could potentially be used for housing, commerce or another use. Regardless of the proposed use of the core of the site, the development team believes that this space should have high-quality courtyard and green spaces throughout that contribute to the, the urban fabric of the Ojai community. Right now, as it stands, moving east from the cores, a proposed parking area and residential housing. The site's northern edge along Aliso Street is preliminarily anticipated to include residential housing and along the site's western edge in this, in this concept that you see is a community garden. These are some design principles that guided the development of this initial conceptual design. These principles will continue to generally guide the project design as we move forward. The developers believe that adhering to these principles along with those contained in the city's general plan and other design documents will ensure a high-quality project for the site. Those are listed there and the highlights are celebrating Ojai as a unique and special place. Design a place that bookends the arcade, Libby Park, the post office and Ojai Avenue. Architecture should be contextual to Ojai and follow all applicable city themes. Pedestrian scaled and human spaces should be prioritized with gardens and green spaces throughout the site. And productively manage parking and site design to encourage alternatives to single occupancy vehicles such as pedestrians, cyclists and public transportation. And then also reduce water and utilize native plants and landscaping. This is a, this slide shows just another view of the conceptual site plan developed by our team at this point. The conceptual land uses being considered by the project team are color-coded in this exhibit. The red color is the historic Ojai Nordoff School, which could be adaptively reused. The yellow color is a potential hotel location. The green color is a proposed parking area. And finally, the blue-purple color in the north is proposed residential uses. I know this is pretty zoomed out, so I've zoomed in a little bit to you. This is the, the southern portion of the site. And this is the northern portion of the site. This table shows a breakdown of the preliminary concept by use and area. The uses and areas in this table are, are subject to change and based upon the input of the community and as we move forward into design development. The total square footage developed on the site is listed here and these are very preliminary numbers that are subject to fluctuation and change as we move forward in the process. As you see, this graphic shows the existing versus proposed land uses on the 8.4 acre site. A large portion of the site is currently used for vehicular storage, district-related light industrial activities and parking. The conceptual design would significantly shrink the area used for this purpose and instead focus a large portion of the site on gardens, open space and, and public amenities. Conceptual elevations have been developed for the site to show conceptual building massing and scale. These elevations are very preliminary and do not show architectural details at this time. The architecture will generally reflect the Spanish and Mission Revival heritage of the site along with other traditional styles present in the Ojai Valley, such as craftsman styles or other similar architectural vernaculars. This image prepared by Christina, the development team, shows a potential design inspiration that could potentially be incorporated into the structures. And this image shows design inspiration for the plant palette. The Ojai Valley and the surrounding mountains are truly blessed with a wide array of wonderful floral and fauna and the developer intends to incorporate the local plant palette as much as we possibly can into the site design. All right, wrapping up here, the project site highlighted in blue is currently zoned public slash quasi-public. To facilitate the proposed project, a zone change to village mixed use is tentatively proposed at this time. This zoning designation offers the most flexibility for the potential proposed uses and could come, and could accommodate a, a large spectrum of land uses. This would allow for a dynamic blend of compatible uses next to each other, creating a vibrant space for the community and visitors alike. The proposed floor area ratio or FAR, which you see listed here, is 0.50. This is less than the allowed 1.5 for area ratio in the adjacent C1 zone. And right now, as it stands, approximately 2.1 acres of the 8.4 acre site will be set aside as public open space under this conceptual proposal. This slide outlines the anticipated planning entitlements that'll be needed as we move forward together in this process. We anticipated needing the following entitlements, which are listed here on your screen, general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, design review permit, lot line adjustment or parcel map and potential development agreement. And just to reiterate where we are, we are in that very first box right there, concept review. So I look forward to working with the community, with the school district and with the development team as we begin this process together. This is our team that's here tonight and available for any questions, should you have them at a appropriate time as deemed by the planning commission. I'd like to thank you all and that concludes my presentation.
And just to make a brief statement on behalf of the school district, I, I think we can all agree that the school district is an integral part of this community. I believe it's the largest employer in the area and it's charged with the most important work that there is, educating this community's children. Members, thank you. Members of this community, through the surplus property process that we heard about, which is a very public process, recommended the district pursue a disposition of the property. And why? Because the district is in a facility that is outdated, oversized and incompatible. A development, notice I said a development, of the site can infuse much-needed funding to directly benefit the students of this community. It can also facilitate the relocation of the school district programs and its administrative office from an outdated, incompatible site to something that is right-sized and appropriate that would then contribute to the ability of the district to more effectively serve the students. And to the extent there's residential as a part of this, as a part of a development and to the extent that that residential generates students, why we would love that too. So, thank you.
If we're going, if we're going to have speakers, let's have one at a time and either at one of these tables up here or at the microphone in front, please. Now, Lucas, this is the usual time in a concept review when the planning commissioners get to ask questions of staff or of the applicants. Do you want to defer that and go right to public comment?
Chair, well, see, I have a couple of comments for the city before we go to public comment.
Please go ahead. For those who don't recognize the gentleman who just spoke, that's Matthew Summers. He is the city attorney. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, recommendation would be to defer the planning commission questions until after. The most important part of tonight is the community's comments, so I'll only take two or three more minutes to make two points. First point is noted, there's no decisions tonight. The planning commission will not be making a decision tonight. Instead, the planning commission is going to be hearing from the community, hearing about what the community needs and hopefully the school district will listen. The second is to clarify a point that was made earlier. The development responsibility is not with the city. The development responsibility lies with the school district, who owns the land. It's their responsibility to develop a project as they see fit, then to develop it to a point where it's a viable proposal and then, then to bring it to the city. Only then can the planning commission on recommendation and the city council on action after a series of public comment, public comment process, public hearings, environmental review and other studies make a final decision. So I wanted to make sure that the community understands that the cities, this is not the city's project. It is not the city's land, it's not the city's project. It's the school district's project to put something together, as they've attempted to do today, to then bring for community review and comment, probably after tonight, I would hope, some adjustment. And then it will come back through the process. The final decision will be made by the city council regarding the zoning for the site after a recommendation from the planning commission. And then that can itself be subject to referendum and a vote by the voters. The school district is the landowner. They have the responsibility to move any development forward. And to the commissioners, I would add, mindful that the project we have just been presented and will hear about is likely to change, I would suggest that we may find the need for detailed comments to be premature and to stick to more general comments such as commentary on land use. This is a legislative matter, so there, the applicant has this right to have this hearing in this process, but it's legislative, so the city has the absolute right to rezone as desired or as not desired. And so commenting on the land uses is legal, but I would bear that point in mind. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll start and as Lucas mentioned before, we're going to have speakers who are here present, then speakers who have turned in a green card and I suspect Sherry still has some more cards over there. And Maura is going to bring them over, fine. We will, we will be calling speakers in the order in which they turned in their green cards. And at the end of that process, then we will have questions from the planning commission. Okay?
Chair, well, see, I'd also like to identify that if there are people who are, who are listening in through Zoom, also provide.
Oh, yes, right.
Thank you.
The third, third group of speakers, if such exists, will be those people that are attending virtually. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Maura. Well, just, just in general, I'm figuring we have around 50. And we are, we are leaving this at three minutes per person. You will see a clock on the screen and you will be facing the screen if you are the speaker. So when we, when the screen reaches zero time, I ask you, please, end your talk and make room for the next speaker. Thank you very much. First up is Brian Akins.
My name's Brian Akins. I'm before you as the Chair of the City of Ojai's Historic Preservation Commission, a commission that seems to have been forgotten tonight and not in your presentation, so let's talk about what it does. I just want to share some information for those here tonight. Much of this can be found in the packet. Public staff report you ever received states the site is designated as historical landmark site number 24, Ojai Nordoff Grammar School. As a result, approval by the Historic Preservation Commission is required for any work on the site that requires a work permit under the municipal code, including the proposed complete site development project. Staff is currently working. Staff is currently working with the Historic Preservation Commission Chair to schedule a further concept review on a future agenda. That would be me. June 23rd, 2015, when did this start? HPC requested funds from the city. June 30th, they approved the funds. October 12th, 2017, the Historic Preservation Commission received a staff report with the Historic Resources Report that was done for the HPC to understand what was historical and what was worth landmarking. After discussion, the HPC unanimously recommended the city council designate the entire Nordoff Grammar School, including the original kindergarten buildings, except for non-contributing corporate yard in the rear of the property. November 28th, 2017, Council Resolution Section Number One, based on the findings contained, again, this comes straight from the package that was given to the planning commission, anybody can find it online. Based on the findings contained in the Historic Resources Report and addendum contained herein, the city council hereby designates three portions of the Nordoff Grammar School property at 414 East Ojai Avenue, a City of Ojai Historic Landmark number 24, as it relates to the defining architectural characteristics listed and documented as exterior objects of record stated in this resolution. Those three portions are the arcaded grammar school building, specifically the portion facing Ojai Avenue, the lawn area in front of the arcaded grammar school building facing Ojai Avenue, and the chaperal auditorium along Ojai Avenue. These significant cultural features described below constitute the elements that define the character of the Spanish Revival building. Any alteration to the exterior of the original Nordoff Grammar Schools arcaded grammar school building, specifically the portion facing Ojai Avenue, the lawn area, and the chaperal auditorium, including doors, windows, roofs, exterior walls, and any alteration of the character defining elements described in this resolution that exist in these three designated portions of the property requires the approval of a work permit by the Historic Preservation Commission under the terms of the city's cultural and historic preservation. So I just make a request that maybe we put the historic presentation or Preservation Commission somewhere in that slideshow. Thank you.
Maybe we could clap more quietly. Okay, next up, Larry Steingold, is that correct?
Larry Steingold, Ojai resident. We moved here four and a half years ago from Rhode Island to be in Ojai because we love Ojai. We have come to like Ojai and love Ojai. I didn't come here to move Rhode Island to Ojai, just like most of these people from wherever they came from didn't bring, they don't want to bring what they came from here. They want to keep this Ojai. And this is too dense. Three-story apartment house as a garage, keep it at Wagon Wheel. Keep it in Westlake, keep it in somewhere else, but not here. We don't need a three-story apartment house in different buildings, creating like a package. I mean, this is a real estate development. I'm sure you've got other options besides the hotel. You've got retail, whatever fits under zoning or whatever can be connived. It's okay. Because you're dangling sales tax in front of the city, I get it. The state, the school department needs money. Turn it into a technical school. Why not? These kids are graduating. They're going to colleges, and they're coming out with four-year high school degrees. They're coming out just as they went in. Some of them go on, that's great. But a lot of these kids come out, they don't have a clue. Teach them HVAC, plumbing. Nobody can find anything. Houston can't find people to fix a line. Teach them how to do business. Teach them how to return a phone call. I'm learning. It is Ojai. Okay? Showing up on time, I get it. It's California. It's actually Ojai. But I love Ojai. I don't want to have it turned into someplace it isn't. People didn't come here because it's not Ojai. They came here because of Ojai, and they stay here because of Ojai. This is home.
I appreciate the enthusiasm. If we have this much applause at every speaker, we'll be here till midnight. I don't think any of us want that. Next up is Linda Taylor.
Good evening, everybody. I've been a resident of Ojai since 1978. I was a teacher at Nordoff from 1986 until 2004, and I became a school board member from 2004 until 2016. So I've really experienced a lot of education, some of the problems and some of the issues here in the valley. I think the most serious problem we have is lack of funds. And I have to say that we actually started this process of what to do with the district property in 2006, when Tim Baird was still the superintendent. We had a request for proposal. We actually got a proposal that was negotiated by Danny Pusatieri, who some of you may remember. And it was really very similar to what we have, what we saw tonight, this particular proposal. And I think that what we have to have and what people have to understand is the dire situation of finances here in the Ojai Unified School District. And I see that you guys all are beginning to learn that, and hopefully people here in the audience will understand. Something has to be done. Either the district wins the lottery, which is not going to happen, I don't think, or somebody here in the audience wins the lottery and donates $50 million to the district. Or we do some, the district does something that they're doing now, which is developing the district property and trying to make it something that will work with everyone. I do agree that a hotel is not ideal, but it also makes money. And if you can go in Santa Barbara and look around at the retail situation there, you see that about every, more than half of the businesses are empty. So whatever the district decides to do, whatever the commission decides, the planning commission decides to do, it needs to be something that will make money for the district, so that our teachers will be paid properly. Our teachers now are at the bottom of the rung in terms of, you know, our county schools. And that's because we don't have the money. Our buildings are beginning to be put back together thanks to the community's support of the different bond measures, which I think have been really, that's really been spectacular, but it's still not enough. The economic turndown in 2007 and 2008, when I was on the board, it was really horrible for our district, and it really left, you know, a lot of things being unrepaired, and a lot of teachers were let go that really we needed. We have a very interesting group of teachers now. They're wonderful. They're dedicated. They work incredibly hard, and they deserve our support, and hopefully the community will understand that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Tom Jeffrey.
Chair, it's Tara.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, there you go. Tara Jeffrey. My apologies.
Hi, good evening. I'm responding to something in the paper that this was called like a tourist I don't know, playground or something. I'm paraphrasing here, but I think that it's time for the city government to recognize that we have become a tourist-centric town, and the residents have been pushed beyond our capacity to be welcoming. I speak for myself and for many who are too shy to speak at this podium. I feel like I live in a town that I no longer am part of. Many of us avoid the center of town on weekends due to crowds, parking issues, and not being able to access restaurants. I have noticed that it is not just exclusive to weekends anymore. There is a constant buzz of tourists. My clients and I joke about it, but it's really problematic to feel like you have to live on the outskirts of town. While I am happy our local economy appears to be thriving, it seems the only ones that are really benefiting from increased tourism are hotels and retailers. This tourism on steroids will do nothing but make Ojai ordinary and a parody of itself. I am also a business owner and see this project as the final nail in the coffin, destroying Ojai's legacy as a unique place. A project like this will deter people from wanting to come here, and it will increase traffic, water use, et cetera, and make accessing downtown more intolerable than it already is. With a project of this magnitude that will force tourists and residents to use residential streets to get around, we will have no escape. How will this project ever survive the scrutiny of a traffic study? Our current water situation alone would appear to make this project impossible. The Oaks Hotel is not even up and running, which will be another huge impact to water, traffic, smog, and noise. Is this really necessary to keep the merchants happy and to help the school district? There's got to be another way. It's my understanding there are other options for the school district. The developer has no ironclad plan to help OUSD. That was in the paper this week. Also, it's only allowing for 15% of the housing to go to low-income units, with no guarantee that the units would go to low-income Ojai residents. Is it finally okay to say we don't need any more tourism? How about managing what we have better? More tourism is not the answer. Given the nefarious nature and alternatives that have not been adequately explored, this is inappropriate, I think. And I think that we need to look at everyone that lives here and not just the tourists. Thank you.
I appreciate the suggestion that was given to me just now. Next up is Ron Gordon, and after that, Anita Hendricks. So be prepared. Mr. Gordon.
Hi, my name is Ron Gordon, longtime Ojai resident, at least a week. Tara, thank you for your talk. It hit home. I think the major thing I want to address with you guys tonight is transparency and a community presence online. SVS Dev LLC, do you have a website? No. Is there anything posted online about the company, about who owns it, who are the officers? I think the community needs to know who you guys are, okay? A lot of my other comments are based on the concept that was put to the school board last January. And there's just, as this project goes forward, and again, it's changed from a 200-room hotel to 175-room hotel to maybe no hotel, all in the space of an hour and five minutes. The thing is, there's a lot of things that really bothered me about the conceptual plan. Parking, 200-room hotel, retail, 250 parking spaces. How many employees are going to be working at the site under that plan? Where are they going to park? Okay? Another thing about employment is, with a hotel, your average salary will not allow anybody to live in Ojai, which means people who live elsewhere contribute to traffic coming up to Ojai. Water. I think the best way to look at water is what is being used now at the site versus what will be used under whatever you propose. And, guy, I think that's all my ranting and raving for right now. The other thing about transparency, and maybe this has to do with the commission also, is Mr. Tanner's PowerPoint. Is that something that you guys can distribute to the public? Because there's a lot of information in there that has not been released yet. What's that? Yes. And what else? I think my last comment was, the Ojai Valley in has 306 rooms. Just for comparison. Thank you.
Next is Anita Hendricks, and on deck, Lason Bernstein, is that correct?
Good evening. My name is Anita Hendricks. I've been a resident in Ojai Valley for over 40 years. I have a real concern about the 200-plus hotel plus the 200-plus parking. This is not the scale I think most of us want to see in Ojai. I have a friend who comes to town every so often and stays here at one of the local, not exactly hotel, a very nice B and B. And she, when she heard about this, she said, "Oh, my gosh, I won't come to Ojai." We don't come here to see that magnitude of buildings. They're here because it's a charming, small, quaint town. Unfortunately, we're losing ground all the time, but this is just way too big. The affordable housing units I heard were proposed 15 units. Affordable housing scale, I think it's somewhere as high as 170,000 to be, you can still be considered affordable housing. Correct me on that, it's somewhere that was staggering to me. We have people in the lower-income brackets who can't find places to live. There's a lady here who had to move out of town. I have a friend drives a nice car, lives in a nice apartment right here in town. Every year, her rent goes up. She is feeling like she has to move. You saw that woman right now. You think she was a very classy, wealthy woman. She's not. And we have other people who are in even worse condition. I would like to propose, instead of a huge hotel, housing, but for the very low income. With the area Housing Authority building, it would love if they were tiny homes in that area where you're proposing a hotel. I don't really like development of the area. I don't like the whole business and the whole money-making thing. I think we are a very resourceful community. I think we could brainstorm and come up with some other ideas. We could have an amazing school there, in which people, the teachers live on the property. The students are able to grow gardens. It would be a live-work-learn environment. That would be a magnificent use of that space. It could be a place where other people come and learn from us. We have an amazing farmer's market there. I would hate to see that go. That is the highlight of many people's lives here right now. You go to that farmer's market, there's that beautiful square, there are trees, there's music, there's the surrounding building. It's like an old-fashioned country fair, and people mingle and mill. It is quite a gem. Okay, how much money are you guys hoping to make from this? Please tell us. And is there, how much is your organization making? Are you totally selflessly dedicated to making this work for our community? Or how much money do you need to make? How much does the school district need to make? We don't know that, and we can't think of ways to help raise revenue if that's what you need. You know, without knowing those things, I haven't heard anything in that regard. Let's see what else I have here. My time's up.
Okay, Lason Bernstein, and then up is, next up is Demetria Warren.
Hey, everybody. My name's Lason. Please forgive me, I wrote this in like five minutes, just a little bit ago. I was born and raised here, and I went to Nordoff, and I grew up playing in the mountains and enjoying all of the wonderful things that Ojai has to offer. And I think I speak for a lot of people when I say it's truly tragic to see how much the town has changed in the last 15 years. Many of my peers who also grew up here can no longer afford to live here, and much of what I loved about this place as a child no longer exists. Most locals I know no longer go downtown because of traffic and overcrowding. I fear that more development will lead to more traffic, which is something we cannot handle. I also understand that change can't be stopped and that these issues are very complex. However, I feel that this project is reflective of a larger issue. People from out of town who are out of touch with the community come from other areas with an idea of what's best for the community, to make it more similar to what they're familiar with. But they do so without assimilating into the community first and being aware of what we actually need. I also understand that this project is underpinned by economics to a high degree, and to that point, I would like to offer this. The draw that Ojai has to tourists is in large part because of its history and its quirky charm. Plastering over these areas with more retail, hotels, or whatever may end up being the case will take away from that unique and special characteristics. I'd like to leave you with one final point, which is that housing prices are already out of control. As I mentioned before, a lot of people that I grew up with can't afford to live in their hometown. If this project is truly for the community, how can you guarantee that any housing units constructed will actually go to the community members and not to wealthy people from out of town, as we have seen in the past?
Demetri Warren, and up next is Elena Poscarell.
My name is Demetria Warren. I've lived here for 20 years. I'm the person, as she mentioned, that had to move. I'm the person, as she mentioned, that had to move away because I could no longer afford to live in Ojai. Ojai is my town. I've been here all my life. As long as I can remember, my enjoyable life has been in Ojai. Worked at the Krishnamurti School, Meditation Mount. Ojai is my town. So I'm saying this as a black woman, a black person in the world. And Ojai didn't have many black people, never has. But Ojai is my town. I feel this town. I love it. To see a hotel here is like the last thing I ever want to see. Not, I don't live here anymore because I can't afford to live here. But I love this town, and I'd love to see us make some money and do what we need to do in this town to make it better. And the last thing I leave you with is that we're here in this world. We all got the same job to make it a better world. We gotta figure out something that works.
Thank you, ma'am. Elena Poscarella, and next up is Patrick Teague.
Thank you. My name's Elena Poscarella, and I bought my home 27 years ago. So I was lucky that I got in when prices were low, right? And now I could not afford to live here, and I moved away. And I've come back four years, about, so it's been about four years ago. And I found out about, oh, I wanted to mention this before I talk, is that we need to recognize that this land is Tumash land, right? No one's bringing, no one has brought that up, and that needs to be part of the planning process. You need to confer with tribal people here and bring them into that process as well. Okay? So I want to hear that. But what I was saying is, I was, I made some flyers to bring people to find out about this because I shamefully didn't know about this until about three weeks ago. And I was outraged because I'm saying, "How could this be possible?" And what I think you're feeling and hearing here from the people is you've messed up in the way you've approached this. This is a horrible start, don't you agree? Horrible start. Okay? So what you've done, what you've done by starting this way is you've lost the trust of the community. You know, on your little box thing that you had of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, community workshops is like the third thing down the line. So you needed to start talking to us before you even did this, like back in 2018, right? Because now, we don't trust you. We don't want you here. We don't want to have anything to do with you. Do you understand that? Okay. So that's what I'm saying is, for you to gain the trust back of all these people sitting here, it's gonna be really, really tough. And for you to even, to start with 200 hotel rooms and go, "Okay, we're gonna go 175", but no, no, no. See, that's the problem, is we do not trust you. We understand that development needs to take place, and we want it to be for the community. Like, we're talking about the farmer's market. You, the farmer's market wasn't even mentioned there. Have you ever been to the farmer's market on Thursday nights? It's beautiful. So that needs to be mentioned in there as well. Okay? I'm just flabbergasted at this, but I, in closing, I just want to say that we want this to be a community space. I'd like to see a Native American interpretive center in there as well. And I would like you to consider what the community wants as well. And I appreciate your time.
Okay. Patrick Teague, and next up is Richard Lobley.
So clearly, we can all agree, nobody wants this to happen. I was born and raised in Ojai, and similarly, a lot of my friends, they can't afford to live here. It's the town you grow up in, you move away, and you can never come back. I really don't understand why we're talking about giving up a piece of public land to development. That's for us. It's not for you to sell to make some money off of. If you want to raise some money, raise some taxes. Do a bond measure. I mean, that's, that's what we can do to help this situation. We don't have to sell it so that San Francisco can benefit from a development down here.
Richard Lobley next, and after that Gloria Valladolid.
Yeah.
Sorry if I butchered that.
So I came to Ojai in 1954 at the age of four and went to Ojai Elementary. My father's a teacher there for, I think, 30 years. My father was a teacher at Ojai Elementary for 30 years. I came here in 1954 at the age of four. And I don't think anybody here is against something happening on that property. I think that's clear. The 200-room hotel just has to go. I mean, that's, you know. One thing that wasn't brought up tonight was the Oaks Hotel. So you have the Oaks Hotel at one end of the arcade, and you have possibly 200-room hotel at the other end. And to me, that just kind of annexes downtown Ojai for hotels. It becomes an annex of the tourist industry. I understand you need a tourist, it's a tourist economy, you need that money. I was talking to a friend of mine who grew up in Ojai, and he's the mayor. He's been the mayor for 17 years of a very big city in Southern California. And he was just telling me there are alternate ways to finance this. We don't need development. The example he gave, I don't know if it's appropriate to Ojai, but he said, parking meters, you put in parking meters in Ojai, Ojai residents are exempt from paying them, and you get millions of dollars every year coming into the city. And that kind of money can be used to develop, to develop the property. Maybe that's not appropriate, the parking meter's so high, I don't know, but it's really clear there are other alternatives to do this. So, thank you.
Gloria, you're up next, and then next, Kelsey Gordon.
Hey, the city attorney said you're here to listen to our needs. Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, first level describes physiological needs. Water. Terry Young, environmental scientist, says water is finite, and you cannot make it. The water we use now is the same water that existed in the time of dinosaurs. Aquifers, pumping of groundwater in California is causing the land to sink, says Michelle Snead, a hydrologist with the U.S. Geological Survey. Desalination, these plants that have opened close right away because they are impractical, uneconomical, produce little drinkable water for all the resources, and they create a new problem, brine, which has been blamed for increasing unwanted salinity of the oceans. State water, Bruce Juggan, urban planner, Ojai, says state water is nearly dry. And those that are connected will only receive 5% of their allocation this year. As you may know, Ojai's backup water plant is Lake Casitas. It is at 34%, not enough for us and your impossible, unacceptable, grandiose, pie-in-the-sky project.
Kelsey Gordon up. Next up is Trevor Quirk.
Hi, my name's Kelsey Gordon. I go by Rosie. That's a very tough act to follow, Gloria. Most people have said what needs to be said. This idea is insane, and to talk about it as a 200-room boutique hotel, it's a resort. You guys will have a pool for your spa guests before we have a community pool that anybody can use. I get it. I get it that you see this cute town and you think there's money to be made there. I don't want to live in downtown Disney. I moved back here. I'm only able to live here because a family member gives me reduced rent. Otherwise, not an option. I get it. You saw an opportunity and you thought, "Let's take it." I really, 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 really hope you realize, and I'm not saying this to be flippant, in every movie, in every TV show, when the mean developers come to town and the scrappy town stands up and says, "No, you're the bad guys. You're the bad guys. I'm so sorry, nothing against you personally, but this is a horrible idea. There's no water. This town has actual tangible needs. There is no permanent housing structure for the homeless or those experiencing housing insecurity. Nothing. Nothing. We have no evacuation plan for when our town will inevitably light on fire again. There is like two roads in, two roads out. We have to sit in our cars for two hours to evacuate burning flames. This is a bad idea. I think it's okay to say, "We thought we had a chance with some really awesome development here." No, it's a horrible idea. Please, please listen to this town. Please listen to these wonderful people. Please listen to people like Gloria. This is a bad idea, and a 200-room boutique hotel is not. It's a resort with a spa, where my child currently goes to preschool. Thank you.
Trevor Quirk next, and then Nuri. Good evening, Grohnagli.
Thank you very much for being here, and thank you to all of you for being here. My name is Trevor Quirk. I live on Sulphur Mountain Road in Upper Ojai. I came here to do two things. Number one, I want to deliver a petition to the commissioners that I started 10 days ago, and it currently has over 2,000 signatures in opposition to this development. The reasons the community are opposed to this development have already been laid out. Water, congestion, traffic. But something that needs to be discussed is, this development is not in the community's best interests. It's not. It's not gonna happen tomorrow. It's not gonna happen two years from now, and it's not gonna happen five years from now. You guys know that. Brad, I talked to you about it today. You know it. The town knows it. Okay? Sir, you said earlier that some, what's not acceptable is nothing. That's not true. That's not true. Because two months ago, the school board told you at a meeting, "There has to be sufficient, quote-unquote, off-ramps." Why aren't you telling that to the community? Why aren't you telling the community that a lease has not been signed? Why aren't you guys telling the community that you've assembled this team of people? And the team of people was hired by the Ojai School District to do one thing. Monetize the project. Make the school district money. You cannot serve two people. You guys have a conflict of interest. Jensen, where are you? You stood up here, sir, you did it too. We're here to work with the community. That's BS. You're not here to work with us. If you were, you would have incorporated these people's thoughts long ago. The 7-Eleven committee you talked about, that 7-Eleven committee was formed to do one thing. Monetize the project. That's not what the community wants. You know that. So where do you go from here? What do you do? You guys know this project's not gonna happen. You gotta go back to the school board, who's coincidentally at another meeting tonight, and tell them, "This project's gotta be scrapped. We gotta do what they did in Central Park. Form a commission of these folks. Ask them for their input, real input, instead of giving us three minutes." And then go back to the drawing board and say, "Okay, we can simultaneously maybe serve the community's best interests and the school district. Maybe we can build something that generates revenue for the community and includes, how about, a pool? Let's start there." Thank you.
Up next, after Nuri, is Amelia Arianas.
My name is Nuri Ranegi. I am Natasha Ephras's mother. Rock, Tree, Sky School. That is the service for Ojai. We moved here 11 years ago, and my daughter opened this school for Ojai children. Exceptional school in the whole United States and the world. Yes. That's the service to Ojai. And now I don't have anything to tell you people because you are not, at least I can only talk to you folks, Board of Education and all. We did, of course, that's a separate issue, but it's not. Reality and humanity. We spent $6 trillion carrying a war for 20 years the other side of United, the other side of the world, while here, for money for our schools, we have to destroy the city to have money for school. This is what we are saying. While, while we need to look at our priorities, this city is one of the exceptional cities that is for peace. Nuclear abolition, nuclear abolition was here, nuclear, yeah. This city and this estate. We are, we want to keep it peaceful. We want to keep it without all that money, 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 money mongering and trying to... I am sick and tired of our schools having so much problem and having to go and sell and destroy to make up schools. Destroy the city to make up schools. No, it's enough. We do have, this is a rich country. We do have money. There are other places that we, we waste so much. We don't have to destroy our city to make up, to have, to school have a little money.
Thank you. After Amelia, next will be Dwayne Bauer.
Hello. I would like to say that...
Step a little closer.
Your main goal, your aim for this was to make money. Starting from there, you will not have a good result if that is your aim, is to make money. Not, that was not the first thing you said, was for the community or for the students or the people that you are taking the land away from them or for the people who are currently there now. Your aim was to make money for the school district. That will not have a good result. And also, I wanted to say, the people you guys are bringing to Ojai that will come for your boutique hotel, they aren't the people who are the locals of Ojai here. They are different. We see them on the weekends, we see them in the streets. They are not the people who will stay and contribute to Ojai's community. They are just here to, while Ojai is a trend, while the hotels are here, while you guys are here. But they will not contribute to the community, and they, the people don't want them here. But you're bringing them here by raising the prices and kicking the locals out because the people who live here can't afford to be here anymore. And I'm sorry, I don't have very much prepared to say, but thank you.
Next, next up after Dwayne Bauer is Jeffrey Starkweather.
Hi, Dwayne Bauer here. I was born and raised here in Ojai. I'm not gonna let this place look like San Fernando Valley, I think some of it. And my dad was on the school board in the mid-'60s. He told me that they tried to sell the district, or part of it, in the early '60s. He helped save this same property in '67. Okay? So this has been going on for a long time. So, and I've got friends here that went to school here when it first opened in 1932. I went to school here myself. And for water, again, we keep mentioning it. And for water, again, we keep mentioning it. I'm being sued. All the well owners are being sued here in Ojai for our water from Ventura. We know that. And we don't want to forget that the Ojai Defense Fund is here. That's all we need to mention about that. If you need any more information, you can research it. And for all the buses and the repair and the storage and the offices, that would be terrible thing, trying to rent property or trying to use property of the other districts or the other schools. Okay. So, we, back in the early '60s or late '60s, the state of California tried to put a freeway through Ojai. And this is a minor thing compared to that. They tried twice. We would fill up the auditorium at Nordoff and with everybody on the outside. That's how big we can be. So, we are not going to let you evolve this.
Next up, next up after Jeffrey Starkweather, Michael Pritchard.
Good evening, Commissioners, fellow citizens. I'm Jeffrey Starkweather, 65 graduate of Nordoff High School, and our family moved here in 1953. I strongly oppose this proposed permanent conversion of community-school property into an elite tourist development in exchange for an insignificant annual revenue stream for the public schools. I also oppose an outside developer's specific proposed design. Here, they shown this tonight. As to the proposed conversion, this private property in exchange for undetermined amount of school revenue, I believe it is essential, essentially a cop-out by the school board and the superintendent for their failure to openly and creatively address the reasons for our falling school attendance, low-performance measures, and resulting bureaucratic budgetary crisis. When I ran for the school board, I proposed an alternative strategy that would require much greater parent and community input in developing a long-range plan for improving our schools that could be funded by the already-approved capital bonds, a progressive parcel tax, and resulting revenue from increased enrollment from families both inside and outside the valley. Those suggestions were ignored. As to proposed design, I am totally opposed to leasing community property for an elite tourist hotel, spa, swimming pool, restaurant, and specialized retail shops. I do not see a demand study that would justify the further downtown tourist traffic and increased housing and retail prices that the project would bring. I would not be opposed to allowing bids for creating a mixed-income housing project on the proposed location. But it should contain at least 30% affordable housing, with teachers and staff being given subsidies and first choice on both market rate and affordable units. That is something that would actually address declining enrollment and teacher-staff affordability housing shortage. Nor would I be opposed to some type of parking structure. I would like to see a feasibility study for something like this. I believe we need to scrap what has been proposed by these outside developers and go back to the residents of the Ojai Valley to share ideas for a bottom-up, creative, community-based use of this property and alternative ways to fund and improve our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Michael Pritchard up, and then Barbara Bowman.
Hello, Michael Pritchard. Husband, resident of Ojai, father of three. My wife and I just came back from Austin, Texas. And everybody knows Austin's turned into the California of Texas. But for those of you who haven't been there, there's an area called Southeast Congress. And it's very much like an offshoot, like an Ojai. You know, it's one street, and it's made up of one street, and it's great. We recently just came back, and they built a hotel there. They built a Soho House there, and now it's filled with, you've got Ray-Ban, you've got Lululemon, you've got Hermes stores, and the streets are completely covered in e-bikes and e-scooters. My son, yesterday, when we were talking about this, he's like, "Oh, God, not a hotel. I just hope it doesn't happen, because I'm never going to be able to go there, like through town anymore." I'm not afraid of progress. Look, I think, I think it's really, a lot of people, look, we could say, "You should have been here two years ago," whatever. This is very, if we're kind of calling this a starting point, then let's call it a starting point. I know we just passed a stimulus package for $2 trillion. Maybe there's some money we can look for grants, some monies that are earmarked for social programs. There's a lot of smart people in this entire, in this room. There's a lot of smart people at the desks up here. I think we can do this, and there's a way to make the quote-unquote win-win-win for everybody, okay?
Thank you. After Barbara Bowman, Craig Gardner.
Thank you. This is a frightening thing, quite an audience. You're almost afraid of what you might say. Listen, the last speaker, I think, was very smart in the way they approached this. He said, "I don't think a hotel is the way to go, but I think there is a possibility of working with this group." He may not have said that, but I'm an interpreter that he was saying that, because it is an opportunity that we may not get again, where we could actually work with a group of people who are willing to listen to us. I love the community pool idea. That was really an interesting thought. I mean, the fact that they're keeping the skateboard park. Maybe they don't want a hotel, but maybe more housing. I mean, but they have to have, the school has to have a stream of revenue. The developers have to have a stream of revenue to pay the school. So you have to have it, and the community has to have their needs. So just saying no and screaming and hollering, and this will never happen, is not a very progressive way to handle this. And not saying that we want a hotel, but there's a lot of things this community could use, and there's a lot of things that could maybe provide jobs. Everybody said, "I don't want more stores. I don't want this." I could say, "I don't want any competition with my store." But I don't feel that way. I feel that there are kids that come down, and they grow up, like I did, graduate from Nordoff, and then I had my own business someday. And I had my own business, because there was property in Ojai that I could rent. So, I mean, the fact is, it's very limited what is available. And the rents will go up, because we have this two blocks, and that's it. This would take the east end a little bit. And, you know, rather than saying no, everybody that has really been loud and vocal tonight, but Trevor, actually, you said some interesting things. You said, "Let's go back to the drawing board. Let's work with these people." They seem very open. He said, "If you don't want a hotel, you don't want a hotel. But let's figure out what you do want, what will work, and what will give both things." So let's not just say no, let's all get together. I love the idea that the people that came up here and were open to saying, "Let's start back and work on this, what we need." Thank you, everybody.
After Craig Gardner, Alan Thornhill.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Get closer to the microphone, pick it up. There you go.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to acknowledge, I believe one of the previous speakers talked about Indigenous people, land acknowledgement, and I just want to reiterate that. To a second point, I find it kind of disingenuous when it's kind of held out as, "No, this is for the school district. This is for the children. This is for their benefit. This is going to be solved through money, the tax that we're going to get, or whatever other source of income we're getting from this property." I'm the father of three children. Two of them are currently enrolled in Topa Topa, and I'll have a third there in the next two years. As I think about this enticement that's being offered to the parents, it's like, "Oh, we'll have this money for the kids." It's not worth selling my kids' sense of community. It's not worth selling my kids' sense of being. You know, my neighbors have all escaped from places like Santa Monica. They've escaped from San Diego. They've escaped from Venice Beach to come up here because Ojai's special. And that's what we want to instill in our children, is the uniqueness of Ojai. And it's not worth selling out those things so that they can have another screen that provided by the school, or have faster internet, or have, you know, health insurance that's being provided to the board members. Those are all things, they are expenditures that are being used that are not being addressed. And so, yes, it would be, I do appreciate some of the comments about coming back to the drawing board. This needs to be a community-focused endeavor, and this needs to be provided for the children, because that's what it's ultimately going to be for, is the children. So, I don't see kids coming in to the hotels. I don't see kids, you know, they're not doing those types of things. But I'd like to refocus back on, what's the ultimate goal in here, is to provide for those children. Thank you.
Next up after Alan Thornhill, Nina Trimbeth.
Hi. I agree with a whole lot of things that everybody has said tonight, and just about everything that everybody has said tonight. And likewise, I didn't know about this either until just the last couple of weeks. And I don't have my head buried in the sand, but this is something that I've not heard anybody talk about until last Friday's paper came out. And I knew it was in the works, but I just, I don't have a list of things that I'm going to say here, but I do agree with most of what everybody has said tonight. And one thing that seems real obvious is that this does not seem to be in the best interest of our community. It does not seem to be in the best interest of our schools, other than maybe it's going to help to bail the schools out of some debt, or, and maybe make them a little more solvent. But in the long run, what we get in return is like what everybody else has said, we get a major hotel right in the center of our town. And it's just, it's, I can't wrap my head around that. I don't, I think if the people of the town were to have gotten together and been included in the discussion of this, this idea would have never come up. I've heard some great ideas tonight, and maybe some of them don't make the big dollars that maybe a real estate developer is used to going after. But this is a little town, or it used to be. My kids went to school here. I grew up here. I now have grandkids here. My kids, one of my kids teaches in the school system now. The other one's a fireman. Neither one can afford to live here. And their children, at the rate things are going, won't be able to live here. And I think it's very important that we be very careful in making a decision like this and really try to do what's going to be in the best interest of the future and the schools, which are about the kids, which are about the families, which are about people being able to afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. After Nina Trimbeth, Sonae Goodman. Nina? Nina Trimbeth? All right. Sonae Goodman? And next up will be Chris Wallen.
Hi, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous.
Stay close to the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry. And so, as most people have said, you know, community, not for a hotel, and such. And so, I actually had a question concerning, like, the, sorry, I'm kind of nervous, the residential housing, and whether it's for rent or for purchase. If we do, if you guys are pivoting in that direction and no longer doing hotel, are you guys planning on renting those units, or are they for purchase? Who am I asking here? Who's in charge of this? Brian, is that you? Would you be answering this?
The chair could choose to recognize the developer to answer the question with a brief comment.
Yeah, fine. Go ahead, if you...
I think it's indeterminate.
Okay, so you guys have planned this whole thing out, 200 rooms, everything? You guys didn't look into, like, the housing for the community or anything like that?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't plan the whole thing out. We just put up a concept as a place to start. And so, the housing is indeterminate. When we had a community meeting back in the early part of 2019, almost two years ago, this concept was basically put forth back then. So this, this was, this basic concept, more or less, was put forth back then, and then we kind of went to work with the school district, and I don't want to...
So if you guys are pivoting towards housing, which, if you guys even go forward with this, I hope that is where you're going, with a land lease, are you guys able to offer housing for purchase for low income and such? It, I don't know the rules for land lease and purchasing housing versus renting, so I was wondering...
I mean, speaking for myself, workforce housing is music to my ears. That would be an amazing use.
But as far as, can people purchase, like, low-income housing? Is that, how does that work with a land lease?
That could be done.
But let me comment on behalf of the school board. What attracted the school board to a portion of the proposal is the fact that it's a mixed-use residential development project, that there's a single-family residential on here, and there's also apartment potential for apartments, higher-end apartments. Not expensive apartments, but well-done apartment complexes. But there's also something that took place in the last few years, and it's called the Teacher Housing Act. And I know one thing that the board wants to see is the Teacher Housing Act implemented on this particular project. We're not quite far enough down the line. And that's where it allows school districts to build low-income housing on their property for teachers. And there are grants that are provided for that. So the housing portion is a very important portion for the school board. The hotel, I'm going to say it right now. We're going to report back to the board what the sentiment is about the hotel. If the hotel, the board, in its wisdom, doesn't want to deal with the hotel anymore, so be it. So be it. And that's what it's going to be. We are, we are not, the school board does not want to get into World War III with its community. Period. And it's unfortunate that the counselor who submitted the, who circulated the petition, didn't call us up ahead of time. It's fine that it's here, we respect that, we want to meet with him. We would like him to select a few people. We would like to do that, too. But we are going to consider the Teacher Housing Act.
One speaker at a time, please.
Oh, okay. He was speaking for Muslim, but I would just like to say that I hope going forward that you recognize that if you guys do continue with this project, that we would like a lot more transparency as far as what kind of housing, exact numbers, as far as what, where's the housing going to? Who, how much the percentage going to affordable housing? And will that be for rent, for purchase? How does that work with a land lease and hopefully also a community pool?
Absolutely, and it's a very, very positive representation you're making. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Wallen is up, and next is Scott Willing.
Thank you all for being here. I appreciate you hearing us out. Honestly, wish it would have been sooner, think you got that. So I've been hearing a lot of localism, folks on Jensen, growing up in Ventura County, and going to high school, and that's great. One of the key words that I haven't heard here yet, which is shocking, is resiliency. We are, you know, four years removed from a Thomas Fire that pretty much devastated us. And there's a saying that "Never let a good crisis go to waste." And I just am shocked that some of your design principles that you listed in front of us wouldn't have included some sort of resiliency for our community. It's not a beautiful, quaint town. It's a fragile and vulnerable town. And that's where, if you're going to spend a lot of money in this community and you want to win over the community, you need to be on our resilient community side. And that's where some of... you need to be on our resilient community side. And that's where somebody talked about a lack of trust. You know, I know U S D, I've been working with them and they're, they've got a solar bond and they're going forward with resiliency. But I'm just shocked that any new project such as this big wouldn't have had solar and batteries on it. There's a mandate for new construction, 2020, it's required. There's a mandate for commercial buildings coming in 2023. Why not be a thought leader? I'm looking at you. Why not be a thought leader in this space? And, and actually make us feel good about partnering with you guys. Like wow, here's some visionaries coming into our community and bringing resiliency. And you know, the opposite of resiliency is bringing in a thousand people that now we've got to evacuate out the next emergency. So you're just misguided. And that's low hanging fruit. That really is low hanging fruit there. And I would just say for the community, we're at an inflection point here where we get 1.3 million tourists a year coming in from whether it's mostly LA, whatnot. And they come up and they do their olive and wine tasting. They have their pink moment. And is that what we want to just stand for, for the next 10, 20 years? Or do we want to rethink that and actually give them maybe a masterclass in regenerative living? And why don't we all strive for that? Why don't you be our consultants and spend money to help us get there? Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Willing is next and then Richard Wegman.
Hi, thank you again for the opportunity to speak and for everybody who spoke tonight. I came here in the fall of 93 for a few months. I'd lived in Yosemite. I'd lived in Santa Barbara and some other beautiful places, but I found Ohio was the only one I couldn't leave. I loved it here. I still, I love it. I hold on tenuously. I'm an artist and I don't work as an artist. But when I was here early on, there was a lot of talk about a proposed artist's colony, mixed use studio and living quarters on South Montgomery, close to the art center. That didn't happen. We got 6,500 per month rental prices right now on the Santa Barbara like tract row homes that were built there instead, after they chopped down a lot of eucalyptus groves. And the artists had mostly left and some of them left to, to raise families where they could afford to buy homes. But some just couldn't afford the rent anymore. So I'd propose being partial to the artists of all sorts, maybe a mixed use zone where people can live and work and have the studios as that proposal was first made in the mid 90s. And something that would maybe include a senior center. We don't have a lot of that anymore either. I've worked at St. Joseph's Retirement Community. That's now no longer here. There are a lot of aged members in this community that could also use reduced cost housing. But a place where they can interact downtown, not taken away from the town, maybe a place where schools can be involved. And I have a lot of thoughts. We, we could see a lot of income if you're talking about fiduciary responsibilities. Where even studios and galleries that are selling art without the high cost of the gallery owner's rents and electric and utility and employee costs in places like the arcade that exist. We could have the artists purveying their wares like the wave in Ventura, which sadly is built in the fallout zone of the freeway. But is, is a great example of where you can put a lot of artists who are inspired together, working and actually able to afford to stay where they live and where they're inspired to create art. I have a lot of other ideas, but I'll let go at this point. I just hope something good's done for the community and, and like the last speaker said, something as visionary includes more of the input of the community for the community's sake. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard Wegman. Next up, Skip Schuckman. Richard Wegman? All right, we'll move along. Skip Schuckman?
Hello.
We're losing them. Oh.
I just had sort of a lot of stuff prepared, but it's all sort of disappeared. I certainly think that the dense development of that property is inappropriate in the center of town if we want to keep our distinct character in the town of Ojai. And I'm a bit concerned in terms of the inability of the school board to creatively attend to their own finances to avoid a situation where they have to get into turning into land managers and prospectors rather than educators. I think there are probably many educational uses that that area could be put to. And I think the historic buildings could be renovated into staff housing, teacher housing, that kind of thing. So I would like to see a little bit more creative thought on the school board's part in the design and development of this land. So that's my thought. I hope they take their responsibility and get more creative within their own organization and keep this closer to home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Sylvie Lee and following that Ellen Jarvis. Sylvie Lee?
So without echoing everything that everybody already said, I want to say that we are in 2021. And we are, we have to think outside the box. I mean, we need to think bigger. We need to think innovation. We need to think creatively. And I mean, this, this place has attracted big thinkers in the past. And it's always been an amazing place for people to come and do great things. And I feel like the district shouldn't be, the school district especially, should not be any different. So I'm rooting for this community and I'm rooting for everyone coming together and really solving this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Jarvis. And next up, Shanae Coller. Ellen Jarvis? Going once? Well, we'll move on. Shanae Coller? Strike two. How about Louis Gray Jarvis? Okay. Maybe Louis' night bedtime. Jerry Odell? Do we have a Jerry Odell?
He's on his way to the mic.
How are you, family, community of Ojai?
I'm speaking. I've turned sideways.
And listen to all your concerns and I share the same sensitivity of how could we even, first of all, accept any kind of conceptual plan of another hotel motel that obviously everywhere it, it accelerates crime rate. There's environmental impact concerns. There's just a lot of hazardous conduct and we really don't need, or if anything, we're going to have any kind of dwelling, we should have accessible dwelling units that we can rotate within the community garden as we rotate crops. These things will be fire hardened, fire safe and portable and transformable, lightweight and eco compatible. And we can easily move these units around and solve a lot of our affordability in housing and have key locations for key members of our community, working in harmony with each other here and sharing and fulfilling our community relationship. So scrap the hotel idea. Let's get with the community's concerns and put our creative minds together and, and just have a kaleidoscope brainstorm here. We need to do this. I'm willing to offer up some of my passion and, and ideas and, and creativity. And I have years of experience and love to build tiny homes and, and landscape and plant and, and medicinal healing gardens. We have educational courses on environment and, and cohability, how to cohabitate and so on and forth, so forth. The list goes on, you know, we don't need any more hotels. You know, it's just, it, it's just hazardous. And secondly, you know, we also need to invite Julie Tumamite and the local natives people to help help us with the, with the ancestral wisdom here that we need. We need ancestral wisdom. We need local natives people as well as all the family community collaborating in harmony and balance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Denny, or Danny Longwell, Langwell, and after that, Anna Lee Forrester.
Hello, I'm here to, and like many others, express my strong opposition to the development as proposed. And it's just, it's way too dense. It's a, it's a new little city inside of a small town. It's a, it's, it's essentially a new, a new little city inside of a small town right in the center. It's, it's way, it's way too dense. If you look at the surrounding fabric, it's, it's the density of, you know, downtown Santa Barbara or another city that it, it just doesn't fit. And I was, you know, just seeing the proposal, reading through it, I was just, you know, disappointed in that this is what Ojai was bringing to the table in this community. It seems like we would have such a more innovative concept for this centerpiece of our town. You know, adaptive reuse is one of the most sustainable practices of where you can reuse existing structures. So I think there's opportunity there. I think what's there is as dense as it should be. I think those buildings will have a use that the community benefits from, benefits from, and the school district benefits from, and tourists will benefit from it too. But it's not, it's not for tourists. It's for the community. And I think the more, the more innovative we are, the more tourists will continue to want to be here like they are. So I don't think we need to, you know, give them a bunch of hotel rooms. They, they drive up here and they drive home and that's all there is. Thank you.
And I apologize to all here. Anna Lee Foster says we'll speak via Zoom.
I'm here.
Okay.
I live across the street and I ran over. I'm a little bit winded.
Next up is Annie Cox.
Did you just hear what I said? I'm Annika Forrester. I'm not on Zoom. I'm here.
Yep.
Oh, next up. Thank you. I'm sorry. So thank you all for your service. I'm really, really grateful for you showing up, for you inviting us. I know this is a painful process, but I think we can get through it. There's no arguing that something new and more innovative should happen with this OSUD, oh, U S D property. But the beneficiary is the project must be the population that the O U S D serves. And that is Ojai's low to middle income working families, not out of town developers, the out of town leisure class and other speculative real estate investors. Good development can be truly transformational for a community. And I have every expectation that this one could turn out all right if this planning commission and the developers truly listen to the community with a capital C. Unfortunately, the current proposal as it stands is flat footed and tone deaf affront to the residents of Ojai that only promises to further exacerbate the extreme economic disparities of our community, namely in the form of more unlivable low wage service jobs that this project promises to bring. What we need are abundant affordable housing, not abundant hotel rooms. What we need are living wage jobs, not more hospitality and retail pay. What we need is real community development, not an ersatz attempt to add a singular architectural feature and trade it off for more of the same old extractive exploitive economic model that the tourist industry is. To frame this project as a restoration is a cheap and disingenuous attempt at passing off a wolf in sheep's clothing. Back to the drawing board, please. Specific suggestions for improvement. Flip the ratio of hotel rooms to housing units dramatically. Currently, the ratio is about three to one. How about one hotel room for three housing units? Flip the ratio of affordable housing to market rate. Currently, the ratio is about one to nine. How about nine affordable housing units to one market rate housing unit? Bring in our county's experts in building and managing affordable housing like the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation and let them lead the affordable housing element. Prioritize access to this housing for the working poor, retail and hospitality workers, as well as the O U S D classified and certified staff and seniors on fixed incomes. Guarantee that all retail hospitality enterprises will pay a living wage to their employees that would afford them the possibility of living in Ojai and renting within the complex to be developed. And not require them to rely on public assistance and food pantries to subsidize their employer's low pay scale. Prioritize minority women and worker owned businesses and B Corps for leasing retail and hospitality spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Annie Cox here? Annie Cox? All right. How about Grace Malloy? Grace Malloy wished to speak?
She's on her way.
Okay. After Grace, after Grace will be Sabrina Venskus.
All right, Annie, I wish you were here. I'm not ready. Okay, my name is Grace Malloy. I've lived here for over 20 years. I'm on the board of the new Thursday Farmer's Market and the, at the O U S D property. And I'm also on the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council, which for all y'all that don't live in the city, but you live in the Ojai Valley, were your first level of representation with your government. So if you don't know what the MAC is, introduce yourself to me afterwards because we hear projects like this and then advise supervisor, supervisor Leveer about what to do about them. So, all right, let's see, where did I get to? I'm not here to speak on behalf of either of those two entities. But I do first off, want to share some inside information from my experience working with the O U S D on that Farmer's Market board. Very secretive. And that is that specifically Dr. Tiffany Morse and David Rogers and their staff are wonderful. We had, have had such a lovely time working with them. They have gone to bat for us on everything. They've been so supportive of a new community project in that space. So I can see that they would be so supportive of what we're all here to vision with slash for you about for this space. I can't say enough good things about them. Let's see. So I'm not going to waste time on the hotel possibility. Obviously of any size, it's not the way. As one of my best friends who's a preschool teacher would say to one of her students, that's a no. One thing that hasn't been addressed is how incredibly expensive moving the O U S D would be. Chaparral School, the preschool and the nonprofits like the Farmer's Market and Secure Beginnings that use the space. I would love to know what the budget would be for that. And I'm sure that they could get that to you. And just in general, my suggestion is this, two steps. Get to the real starting line, which is a budget that is very widely publicized. And by that I mean notice to every resident of our valley and every homeowner to very different populations. and every homeowner to very different populations who need that information. And then listen, because as you've seen tonight, there's a large youth presence that is starting to show up at these meetings, and they have a lot of wisdom. A lot of the old folks has a lot of wisdom. And we need to put together a series of community workshops to hear that. So please start there. Love the technical school idea, although, and the pool. And I'm sure there's a lot more things that would need to be realistically assessed. I wish I had more time. Thank you. Good night.
It's in that stack somewhere if she didn't speak. Okay, Sabrina Venskus, and next, Kristi Cooper. No, you could have this. Sabrina? No takers. All right. Kristi Cooper? Is Kristi Cooper still here? Excellent. Thank you. And next up is Heidi Whitman.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Cooper. I just want to say that in the last six months, traffic in Ojai has increased to the point where it's gridlock at 5:30, trying to drive down the street every day. It is so bad. There is no way that we could do this development. We can't have any more traffic in this town. And I don't know what's driving that, but I suspect that there were a lot of empty housing units that are now full. People are moving here because they can work remotely, and they'd much rather live in Ojai and work remotely. And they don't, and as a person who works out of my home, I can tell you that there are days when I would like to go rent someplace to go work. So a lot of these people, I think, are moving to Ojai or staying in their homes. Maybe they have two homes, and they're up here in Ojai, working out of their home now, and they may need some spaces to work out of. I think we need to really think about what we're doing here, because this is not going to work, and we can't have more housing units in Ojai with the kind of traffic that we're seeing right now. I have a lot of questions. Number one, when you say you're going to lease the property, does that mean that the property doesn't pay any property tax? So the developer will not be paying any property tax because it's under a lease, and of course, it's owned by the school board, which means those of us that do pay property tax now have to subsidize the business and everybody that's there. I'd also like to know, as somebody asked, who is the developer? SVSLC, sounds like a shell company with no website. And who are the people behind the developer? I'd also like to know who paid for the engineers? You guys did a fabulous job. You did a really nice job. You paid for the engineers. Okay. So I'm in this business, and I know how RFPs work. I'd like to know, and I'd like a log, of any communications between the engineers and the developer and the school district from prior to when the RFP was issued, as well as any communications with the planning department or the City of Ojai staff or any public officials. Because I know that that's the way you win an RFP. You talked to them before. Public record, FOIA request, and I would really like it when you answer this request. That ended up in the RFP.
Thank you. Heidi Whitman, and next up, Holly Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Whitman. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of the City of Ojai. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on this land use project. And this is a land use issue. It's not about how much money the school needs or the school is going to expect to net from this project. It's about appropriate land use and the impact of that land use. I don't believe this project was designed for the community at all. I think, as previous people have said, you can just look at the amount of space that's provided for hotel versus housing, and that's easy to see. It clearly doesn't provide enough housing. The project includes only 63 housing units with only nine affordable units, and there's no mention of any constraints on any of those market units. So right now, I am surrounded on a residential street by people that live here only once every six or eight weekends. So I would really like to see any housing that we put in be for people that live here and not to create 54 more units for people that are going to have a P to tear so they can come up from the valley. So our streets are clogged, and the hotel would generate over 1,463 average daily weekday trips. And that's weekday. That doesn't include the traffic from the shops or the homes or the conference center. Ojai just doesn't need another hotel. It's going to force even more cars onto residential streets, and we all know how much traffic there is on residential streets now. So finally, I think the three-story height of the buildings, the parking garage, none of that is appropriate scale for Ojai. And I think we need to be really careful about what we could lose with this project. So I'm opposed to the hotel and the lack of affordable housing. It's just too much for Ojai, and I'd like to see you bring us a project that the community can live with. So thanks.
Holly Johnson. Terrific. And next up is Stacy Courtney.
Thank you for your time. I'm a 20-plus-year resident of the Ojai Valley, and I just wanted to come here to add my voice as a community member in opposition to this project. I feel like, in my mind, we're at another starting line. I feel really sympathetic and sensitive to the fiscal needs of the district. I feel like you're in the center of an amazing community with entrepreneurs, nonprofit leaders, community organizers who could think through this and meet the needs of the district as well as the community. So to tap into that resource, I think that's a really viable and beautiful opportunity. I'm more focused on this sense of a vision of what could be an expanded library, a community center, maybe leasing areas to local nonprofits that are educationally based. I want to expand the vision of what education really is, because if you think of a child looking to the adults and what is a potential of the future, if they think that development of a retail space is our highest best good, I think we're insulting the intelligence of children. I feel that we... I don't want to do us versus them. I want to think as humans in the middle of a climate crisis with all of the resources. This town is so fucking awesome. This town is so intelligent, including every member of the planning commission and the school board that is here. I feel like we need to, like what we're doing now, it's like, think together. We can think together and solve this problem. I am more than willing to volunteer, to read through things, to be an ally, to meet the needs of the district. I'm a private school educator. I have other maybe passions when it comes to education. I love the Rocktree Sky Model. I love how homeschooling is growing in the valley nationwide. But I just really am kind of situated in this place of possibility, and to really tap into all the entrepreneurs, the people who are farming and running nonprofits in this valley, they're allies in this situation. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Stacy Courtney? Do we have a Stacy Courtney here? All right. Well, let's try Liz Lees Martin? Lees Martin? Okay. Thank you. And next up is Mary Jo Healy.
So thank you again for your service, everyone here tonight, and thank you for everyone who came. My name is Lees Martin. I live at 311 North Signal Street, and that is Village Mixed Juice. I moved here in 1995, and my fiancee, Jimmy Coliri, moved here 40 years ago. So he's raised children here. He has grandchildren here. When I moved here, I was 37, and I was thinking, you know, what do I do as a single? How do I live here? I bought a one-bedroom, one-bath cottage where I could perhaps walk when I was 85, 90 years old. So what I'm seeing in remarks to this thread on Nextdoor with regard to this project is some of the people in our community who are seniors saying, "We would love it if they would create some kind of senior housing where we could sell our houses to the people who have families and young families that would keep the children in the schools here, and then we would like to be able to just be able to walk downtown and, you know, be part of this community." So that's one idea. The other is very much like Scott Willings' idea that Los Arboles was created out of little tiny cottages next to the art center that were originally for artists. And I'm an artist too, and I really like the possibility of something like The Wave, where you've also got artists in these spaces, you know. So it'd be senior housing, creative housing, creating legacy. I mean, what about some kind of mentoring between the youth and the elders? You know, it'd be wonderful if some of the people who are the living treasures of Ojai, who really can't afford to stay here, to have places where they're revered and aren't too much elders are revered, where people are passing their skill sets down to the next generations to come. So these are some of the ideas that I have and would love to see created. And I just want you to know that we're grateful for the opportunity to give input tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo Healy. And next up is Vera Long.
Hello. Thank you so much for listening to all of us. Lees, I love that. Just so awesome, and love how listening to all of us kind of does bring us together. And I think, Barbara, as much as I appreciate your wisdom and how much you contribute in our community, you're saying to be open to this group right here, right now. It's always important to be open, but I think the fact that they came with no choice, with no idea of these other possibilities that our community, I think it's not a long shot to know we weren't going to go for this type of hotel. And if you had come with any other kind of vision option or that input, we would have that roundtable feeling that we're trying to create and we're trying to share with you. So, you know, I also have adult children now, and my son was one that was last to be born in our hospital. So we lost our place to birth. We lost our place to die. Our funeral parlor is gone. I understand the demographics are changing, and that's what we need to embrace, is what's our goal? Do we want to start bringing back in young families? Because this isn't going to do it. Do we want to take care of our growing elder community and share, like Lees was saying, how we bring the wisdom of the elder to the youth that's here? Can we draw on our community's resources? And it seems that we didn't reach out to it. I mean, you could have made use of it in the last couple of years. So these are things that we really do want to share. We really do want to integrate. And, you know, it's time for our action to step up, because when we come into town and we see signs now like "Hide it, lock it, keep it." You know, the people that are here are people that are like, "Be kind, care, share." And we've got to kind of step into what we're wanting to embrace and where our vision wants to be with the realizing of our needs. And I love the tech idea. Both of my sons can't live here. Can't afford it. Brought a fiancee back to come home. "Let's go home. I want to show you Ojai." She was here like half a week and said, "What? Are you kidding?" And, you know, it kind of, we have to take in, do we want to draw back in those people? Are we trying to? How are we going to do it? So there's so many concerns, but one is just that we're grateful to be here. We have so much to offer, and I'm so happy to be a part of this community. Thank you so much.
Vera Long, and then next up, Jacob Wurssis? I'm not sure.
Hello there. Thank you all for hanging in there and being here, sticking strong. And I love so much about what was said. My name is Vera Long. I've been a resident of Ojai for close to 30 years. I used to bicycle around here with a Walkman when the tumbleweeds used to tumble down the main street. I was a wildland firefighter locally for six years, and then I found a hard job. I became a mother. So I raised two kids here. They started out at Monica Ross, but through a good advice of a trusted friend, I realized how wonderful the public schools were. So from K through 12, both my children, who are now grown adults, worked in the, or went through public school. I'm an artist. I'm a member of the Ojai Studio Artists for a long time. I'm on the executive board. I'm the education outreach member. I deeply know how difficult the financial situation of our public education is. About 10 years ago, I made an almost tear-felt, like impassioned speech at a public meeting because they were going to close down Miners Oaks Elementary, where my students, more of my kids went. So I know that, at that time, almost 50% of California schools were almost bankrupt. So I understand that that's a huge problem. But our teachers are wonderful, and I would like to promote positive ideas I've heard here. My main thing, this land, this property, is for the public school kids. So 100% of the benefit should go to our public school kids. And we all have that wonderful idea, but we can be creative in that it's not just money. That is, we can like make dynamic money, like housing for wonderful teachers. The teachers that are in our public school systems are wonderful. This is a wonderful place to live. Like, it's incredible. I mean, who doesn't want to live here? It's gorgeous. So if we have affordable housing for teachers, that will generate, like, you know, constant revenue and also their teachers for our school system. If we have housing for artists that also have like teaching credentials, that's also a huge benefit to both our school system, which is the number one priority. It's school land, and to our community. And affordable housing for people with families, which, as from what I know, one child in the school system is $14,000 to $20,000 a year. So let's make it community-based, and I really believe in the positivity of Ojai. We can create something wonderful. So we just need to create like that multi-beneficial. It's not just money. We don't need to sell out. We can like be creative and support our entire community.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say also, her thinking about the kids, of course, but those kids that are skateboarding now, right in front of their school district, right where they're safe to be, on their way to their skate park. That's like one of the most endearing and positive. And I can't believe that a boutique hotel with all the new retail is going to be embracing our young skaters. It took us forever to get that park, and we don't have a theater. We don't have a theater with it. We don't have the pool. We have got to support these children and these young adults and all the young people that came here, and it's not with the hotel. It's not going to happen.
Jacob? Okay. Next up is Hayden Bean.
My name is Jake Weese. Born, raised, and reside in Ojai. Like she was just saying, growing up in this town, I mean, truly, there's not enough support for the children in general. I mean, if it wasn't for the skate park, what the hell do they do? I mean, half these kids are taking drugs. I've grown up here. You know, we're looking to put in a damn hotel. How's that going to help the problem? And if we're looking to get donations for the school, I happen to be a husband and a father. I have two daughters that go to these schools. One went to Topa Topa, had some of the same teachers. One went to Topa Topa, had some of the same teachers I have. Another one, now she's going to Matuha. My youngest actually goes to the preschool on the property we're talking about. I went to that same kindergarten in the same damn buildings. It's just, it makes me almost want to cry, to be honest. It's ridiculous that the option we're thinking of is putting something so large and not Ojai at all in any way, shape, or form. I mean, when the schools ask for donations, you guys ask for like pencils and pens. If we're having a problem here, let's talk about it. Let's create a fundraiser. Hell, I'll give you $1,000 right now if we need to do something. You don't ask for money. You ask for simple stuff. We don't know what's going on. Talk, you know, be more informative. You know, I love Ojai. I've been here my whole life. So has my father, and his before. And, you know, it's truly just disgusting to me, to be honest. You know, like I said, my two daughters here, they love this place. And every single move we make is going to affect their lives and affect their children's lives. And the way I grew up here was extremely different. We don't even drive down Ojai Avenue anymore. I live right here on Park Road. We have to go up to the next street and take grand just to get out of here. And, you know, you go down the main road, it takes 20 minutes. You know, it just, we're not thinking correctly here. And I don't know what you're thinking here, dude, but we're not looking to make you money. We're looking to help the damn community.
Okay, Hayden Bean. All right. How about Alexander Hernandez? Do we have an ex-Alexander Hernandez? Could I have a John Ofterheide? Is that right? Ofterheide? Comment. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Ofterheide, very good.
Hello. First of all, thank you, and wanted to say with the development company, the fact that they got Ojai so wrong, in my mind, seems that they should not be someone we would want to work with. You know, it's, we want to work with a team that gets Ojai. And if you've missed this much, putting up a hotel and think that that would work in this town, that's just a no. Now, next thing, ideas. I won't repeat. I mean, a lot of people said great ideas, especially the fact that how can we make it a community center? I think the school board has seen it as a golden calf. Well, it's not. It's our community. This is not a frickin' golden calf. And so, I think it's up to the school board to realize you're in the business of education. And you want, part of the education is how do you live? What do you bring to your community? And the school board needs to be thinking about that they are part of an educating system. And to do this, they're not, well, they're educating us on what they think is most important. And I would like them to educate themselves into what's most important to the community. And specifically, things like these ideas of, well, keep the preschool there, and then how about have seniors, have a senior sit around the other side? They do that in a lot of Scandinavian countries, and the seniors are a lot happier. You know, you can do a tech school. My friend's a plumber, and he says, "No, young people want to do these jobs." Well, they don't know it, and they don't see it. Or the other thing is, is how about a teacher's school? I mean, this is an educational community. We've got more schools in this valley than any other place in the world practically. You know, why not have a teacher college? You know, I mean, of course, these are just ideas, and other people have had other great ideas. I don't know if these are great, but anyway. Anyway, thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Next up, Mia Einhardt. Mia? All right, and the last card I have is Vaughn Montgomery.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak and really grateful to all the people who have spoken already. I'm in alignment with most everything that's been said. I think it's pretty obvious that this community does not support this idea in any way. To take a place that's public space, the commons, that's meant for children and education, and then turn it into a commercial center and try to pander to the community that it's for the kids is shameful. Those ideas are commonplace in many parts of the world, which are dominating our world. Money dominates our world, and this town will stand up for the commons as best as it can. And we're relying on the planning commission and the city council and as well as the OUSD to stand with us and stand for us and honor your commitment to this community. It's very clear that there's an abundance of opportunity here. There's a golden opportunity. We haven't, just in the last decade or so, two significant contributions to this community in the skate park and the local farmer's market that's starting tomorrow or every Thursday. We can build on that and make things better and better. We have needs for affordable housing, especially for locals who are being driven out of this community. Gentification is a major issue, very tricky how to solve it. Well, here's a good golden opportunity. All of our schools have, are not full. We have extra space at all of our schools. We can make housing for teachers, for artists, for seniors in these kind of spaces, not for people who just got here, for people who've been here and have some kind of seniority program, where the longer you've been here, the more likely you get to have it. So, the Tumai family is taken care of. So, the Walsh family is taken care of, you know? So that Alan Thornhill's grandkids have a better chance to live here than somebody who just got here from Orange County a couple of years ago. So, there's so much abundance of great ideas, and to go to the drawing board knowing that this community stands with the OUSD, we want them to be fiscally healthy, which also comes with transparency and accountability. Are we wasting money in any of those places? Are we spending it well? Getting seniors in the conversation, getting children in the conversation, artists, nonprofits. This town is so loaded with so many talented people and good-hearted people, so many people with deep roots here who want nothing but the best for this place. The last thing we need is a commercial center in the heart of town, and we need to build on the good work that's been happening with the skate park, with the farmer's market, things that really do benefit the children and the communities and the families who contribute to this town. So, please honor your commitment, those of you on the planning commission, honor your commitment to this community, and take your development idea elsewhere because this isn't the time or place. Thank you.
Okay, Sheri, I'm out of green cards. Do we have anyone in the electronic waiting room? Anyone zooming that wants to speak?
Ecofarm is on.
Ecofarm? Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Webb. I am a part of the Ecological Farming Association. I didn't realize I was logged into that account, but I'm a fourth generation to the Ojai Valley. And this really struck me. I'm actually, you know, looking to have a fifth generation, a child of my own. And the idea of a hotel really doesn't strike me as any interest of the community. The first thing you did mention was that you would be supporting the schools initially, but then you were more so focused on the implementation of a hotel. There wasn't really any way of collaborating with the community, collaborating with the school systems. The current school system offers so much there. Somebody early on mentioned a, you know, turning it more into a technical school where the students can actually implement their skills. And I actually had a meeting with some of the Unified School District members there just yesterday. And we were talking about the horticulture department and how that program there is extremely beneficial to teaching our children how to get more incorporated with our community, how we can actually build community gardens and teach students how to get back into the community, how to build organic farms, how to really build community by working with, you know, waste programs in the local area and like reincorporate this into composting systems right there in their own home gardens. And I'm not, I'm not really hearing any regenerative kind of ideals coming from this plan. I would love to see something more along the lines of a technical skills school or something from the Chaparral High School. Maybe it does involve a retirement community there that, like, everybody could actually work together. Affordable new business conference and office space could be an idea. New businesses, you know, we're really struggling. I struggled to work out of my shop on Bryant as a woodworker. And I imagine if I had the opportunity growing up in Ojai to, you know, work with experienced folks that are willing to help new businesses with, say, a new business office space, I really would have, you know, gained the skills to show up in my community more so than I am really trying to right now.
Thank you. Sheri, do we have anyone else zooming in?
Max Genus.
Hello. Thank you, planning commissioners. My name is Max Genus. I'm from Ventura County, Yimby. We are grassroots group supporting housing development so that we can escape the housing crisis that we're in, really countywide, citywide, and statewide, and in many ways even nationwide. We're in a crisis situation here. Housing, the housing shortage in California is 3.5 million homes, and as a result, we have the worst poverty rate in the entire country. Ojai, also with Fillmore and Santa Paula, according to Stanford and PPIC, has a 1 in 5 poverty rate. That is largely because of the housing shortage, which is driving up costs. I've heard a number of participants tonight talking about how they grew up in Ojai, and a bunch of the people they grew up with do not have the resources to continue to live in Ojai. That's because housing is so expensive because Ojai has repeatedly rejected housing. Now, I think we really need this housing that is coming to this project. Obviously, the school district needs it. I haven't heard any suggestions for ways to actually get the school district the money they need because their enrollment is falling because families can't afford to live here. And the hotel, you know, I'd rather have housing than hotel, but if a hotel is what's going to give the kids in our community the resources they need to be educated properly, I think that's the decision that the school district should have available to them. So, also, we have a bunch of service workers who need jobs. We are still recovering from the pandemic, and I really hope you consider the welfare, not just of the people in this room who want to retain their low-density exclusionary city, but also the welfare of people who are needing homes, needing jobs, and needing an education. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri?
Leslie Ferraro?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of the things that other people have said. We don't have enough water for the people we have. We're certainly not going to have enough water for the more people that come in. I also think that it was interesting that your own traffic guy couldn't get here on time because of traffic. Welcome to what it's like to now live in Ojai. Most of us can't get where we're going without running into traffic, and I don't see any solution when you're talking about bringing 200 more visitors in, more than 200. If you have a 150-room to a 250-room hotel, we're going to have a lot more people, not to mention the people that are going to have to come in and take care of those people. I also agree with what others have said. This feels like it's something that has been thrust upon us and not something that was done in a collaborative way. One of your members is acting all personally offended by comments that we're making, and our comments are not personal to anyone. Our comments are, "We don't feel we've been listened to. We don't feel that our, that our desire, our needs, and our vision for our community has been looked at in any way." I, with others, agree that something needs to be done. We can't let the school board just go completely broke. I don't know if that does involve shuffling schools, closing some schools. I think maybe closing some schools and, yes, opening a vocational school. When I went to high school, which was a number of years ago, we did have auto shop, wood shop, other kinds of shop where kids that didn't want to book learn because they had no interest in it were able to learn a trade, and they're all doing very nicely now, by the way. We need to maybe diversify how we're educating our children. I don't know that any of this is going to be an answer, but I'm feeling pretty sure that the hotel is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm sort of wondering if the school board did investigate low-income housing as opposed to having a hotel. Ojai is way behind in what it's required to have for low-income housing. Clearly, if there was low-income housing for locals, it would not increase our traffic situation, which is horrible. I'm just wondering why this hasn't been investigated and proposed? Why a hotel, which is so obviously, obviously not called for, would only increase our problems of water and traffic, et cetera, et cetera? I don't understand what the thinking was here, and I'm wondering if someone could explain. Or was this investigated? Was it looked, were affordable housing, was it looked at as a possibility? Can somebody answer that?
You know, I'm happy to try to answer questions, but it can quickly devolve into arguments. So, I'd rather just kind of summarize them all, and then I have a bunch of responses. But short answer is, I love affordable housing. I'm building affordable housing right now. It's extremely difficult. If affordable housing made the same money that hotels make, Marriott would be in the affordable housing business. It's just really that simple.
Well, that's very sad. That's all I can say. It's really sad.
Let me try to respond. This is a show of courtesy. Again, the school district is the owner of the property, not the developer. We're here to listen. We're here to get information. I hope at the conclusion of this meeting that each of the commissioners can give us some of their impressions of what they heard this evening. I think it's clear what we heard, what you would not like to see on this site based on what you heard, and what are some of the things that you would like to see. I can certainly summarize, and I would like to summarize what I heard. But it would be nice, because this is a planning commission, not a school board meeting. The school board wants to hear from the commission. We've told our school board not to be planning commissioners. That's not their role. That's not their responsibility. They do not have planning and zoning authority. They do not have planning and zoning authority. I differ a little bit with council about the implication that a school district would have planning and zoning authority. They can override local planning if they're going to build a school and the city doesn't want them to build it. They have statutory authority to do that, but not for zoning, other than, other than the, other than the Teacher Housing Act, which was recently passed. So we really want to work with you. But we have to, this is a planning commission and I'm really sincere. They want to hear what you don't want and what you would like to see as consideration for the revision. And, and like I said, I don't mind summarizing it and then have your comment on it. But this is a teamwork tonight. We want to partner with the city. Thank you.
Sherry?
Chair Qualsey, there's no one else with their hand raised, but there's many attending. So if anybody in the-
Is there anyone else here in the building who wishes to speak? Please identify yourself. You have three minutes.
Joel Anderson, Ojai resident. Just like to request that the budget of OUSD be included in this records that you have here, the annual budget.
All right, anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, then, oh, did I see a hand back there, a hand raised? If you have not spoken already, please come forward, identify yourself, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Katie Montgomery, resident here in Ojai. Along with my husband, we strongly oppose, sorry, my glasses are fogging with my mask, the city considering a large hotel development in Ojai. My first trip to Ojai was over six years ago with my five older brothers and three sisters. We, along with our cousins, aunts and uncles, would come up often in the summer to visit our great uncle Mox at his apricot ranch in the Upper Valley. Over the years, the beauty and small-town feeling of Ojai drew family members to make Ojai their forever home. We currently have four generations still living here in the valley. That two-lane highway that, thank God, is still a two-lane highway through town and up to the ranch near Summit School, still looks much the same. What does not look the same is the traffic that now starts backing up in Oakview, leading into the congestion downtown. It's gotten so bad, I find myself avoiding going downtown on the weekend to eat or attend local events like I used to. Backed up traffic, no parking spaces, long waits for restaurants. Heaven forbid you have to make a left-hand turn navigating all this. I'm going to skip down here. Ojai has long struggled to find the balance between tourism and working to preserve the beauty and delicate nature of the valley. This is not a new challenge to Ojai. However, we have never witnessed this level of people that do not call Ojai home, stepping in to take advantage of the money to be made off the growing tourist trade we are now experiencing here in the valley. The trade only benefits those on the receiving end of its profits. To even consider letting a developer put a 200-room hotel in the middle of our small town makes no sense. The reason it would make no sense would create more dependence on tourism. The more you feed tourism, the more the city depends on tourism. More traffic, more accidents, more cars, more smog, more drain from our limited water supply, more drain on our other natural resources and streams and hiking trails, more cars looking for parking spaces, more hotel bikes weaving around traffic, more people to come to visit, but not personally invested in our community. So how could somebody make sense of this proposition? I can only come up with one reason. There is big money to be made. The city must benefit in a big way financially if they would even consider this huge hotel in the middle of our town. Is it worth selling out those who live here and pay taxes to accommodate more tourists when our valley is already stretched to its capacity? I hope we can count on our elected officials to act responsibly and honestly and let the developers know that Ojai does not have room for them. I cannot imagine how anybody here thinks that Ojai can hold any more than it already does with everything we have. And unless you're going to make new roads and new highways and new infrastructure, you have to go back to the drawing board for something there that this community can support. Thank you.
That's it, Sherry? Okay. No more takers from the building here?
I take, I take that back. Somebody just raised their hand.
Okay.
Cynthia Severs?
Cynthia?
I'm disappointed that the school board, some school board representative isn't there to make the case at this particular meeting because I think it was very important to the, to the community to understand exactly, number one, what exactly is needed for those of us that have not been involved? And I, I went to this elementary school. I, my claim to fame is that I went to kindergarten with Mr. Ojai, David, our late David Mason. And I graduated from Nordoff, I'm pushing 83, at least I can see it from here. And I, I'd like to know what the qualifications are of SVC Development LLC. I haven't been able to find out anything about any kind of project that they've done except some little visitor's center ice cream and coffee place in San Diego. And I just feel like we need to know a lot more about their ability to pull off any kind of project for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
That's, that's the last of the raised hands?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we're going to close the public comment and come back to the planning commission. Like to give us, give us your general thoughts here? Or if you have any questions for staff or for the applicants or the school board representative or whatever? Well, while you're thinking about it, I have a couple of questions. We had the question of, this I think is for Matt Summers, our city attorney. We had the question of property tax come up. If this property were rezoned from PL to VMU, then I believe any development that took place on the property would be paying property tax. Is that right?
Yes, with a caveat. So as long as the school district remains the property under, the school district is tax exempt. No property taxes are paid. If the school district leases the land or a portion of the land to a taxable entity, for example, to a developer, then that lease, that leasehold becomes a taxable interest that's subject to taxes. But all that is subject to taxes is the taxable interest, the leasehold.
So it's not the zoning that matters, it's, it's the user of the land.
And more precisely, it's who either is on title or who has a leasehold.
Yeah.
So if they, if they do something short of a lease, that doesn't create a taxable interest.
Okay, thank you. I heard one speaker tonight talk about the hotel generating 1,400 daily trips. That's seven trips for every hotel room. And I, I just want everyone here to be sure when you, when you talk about these things, make sure that you have the numbers with you that are defensible. I don't see that one as defensible. And I don't know who said it, and I have nothing personal either way about it. But if we're going to be talking about these things, let's, let's work from facts, not from emotion or made up numbers, I'm not sure. There was something in the, in the staff report about maximizing available ride share and transit stop and bike, public bike parking and public transit. And I don't see how that meshes with a hotel. I don't think anybody's going to hop onto the number 16 bus from Pacific View Mall with suitcases and come up here to this hotel, nor ride a bicycle to the hotel with baggage. I walked the property this afternoon and, and several things struck me that, that may be additional hurdles for you to get over, whatever you decide to develop there. Off in the upper northeast corner, the upper corner of parcel A, I think it is, there are a lot of, there are several piles of big granular black stuff. I don't know what it is. I don't know what it's doing to the ground being there. I was glad to see that the fuel tanks, at least were above ground, the fuel tanks for the buses, and that they had a dike around them to try to contain any spills. That's good. But I'm wondering, since I have been told when the skate park was put in, as it was being dug, water began bubbling up. The water table was eight or 10 feet below the surface. And there was talk here, whether we do hotel or residential housing, there was talk of a parking structure with at least one layer subterranean. The people who put in a skate park had to put in a sump pump to keep the skate park from floating up out of the ground. And I'm wondering if you have heard about any of that? And if you are planning to deal with that if you put in subterranean parking?
I can't, I can't speak to that, but we can certainly look into it.
Okay.
And get you back on that. Any development, even if it's the school district wants to do something, there would have to be geological tests in Boringsdon on any site.
And a lot of ground testing, I suspect.
Yeah, but we'll get you that information.
The next time you come through, whether it's with the hotel or with residential parking or whatever, I would, I would ask that you take a closer look at the Ojai Municipal Code regarding parking. My calculations, the hotel, you proposed 183 spaces for 203 rooms. My calculation going by the Municipal Code 1021405, Table 35, says you need about 250 parking spaces, not 183. For the residential properties, 63 spaces is what's proposed. Going by the Municipal Code, it looks to me like about twice that. I don't know about retail and meeting, meeting space and all of that, but there are prescribed amounts of parking that go with those as well. The point being that the city does not want, and, and this doesn't even deal with the workforce parking unless you have all of your workforce walking to work, which we're not in a position to do that right now. But for example, the restaurant, one space for two and a half seats or one space per 100 square feet. You have, you have to realistically add up the parking that's required by the Municipal Code for all of the activities in the size that you propose them because these numbers that you've put in the booklet here don't work. And I think I'll leave it at that right now. As far as the traffic, I, I appreciate your providing a traffic study. What I don't understand is how, how you would expect people coming into town, which is up 33 and 150, coming east in this case on Ojai Avenue. It is almost impossible right now to make a left turn onto Montgomery Street from Ojai Avenue in that, at that location. And if you, and if you put the entrance to a big hotel or to a big residential housing area up Montgomery, I don't know how that could be managed. Maybe you could talk Caltrans into putting a signal in there. I don't know. Even that would only help a small bit. The traffic is, is a problem here. My wife and I just walk around town. We don't, we don't bother driving unless it's the dark of night and I've got to go across town. I think that's probably enough for now, for my, my first impressions.
If, if I could, we've, we've actually made it a condition for the developer, any developer, that, and the traffic consultant is here this evening, there is no question that the school district understands that traffic will dictate the density of this project and that the municipal code will dictate what the traffic calculations and protocols are. So if they're incorrect, they will be corrected. But that will be the, that's what will dictate the density of this project. You hit it right in the bullseye. As the chairman, it will be whatever traffic can be generated will be the density for this project.
Excellent. I, I, I also sympathize with the developer. Anyone who's here that has tried to do, tried to build a new home in Ojai, that happens every once in a while, or, or remodel a home, which happens more frequently. Do you have any idea what it costs to build something? Even, even though the cost of lumber right now is three or four times what it was a year ago, even backing that off, we're still talking, I don't know what, $200, $300 a square foot to build just a house. And so while we all may wish to have a big development, not clear if we had a big residential development on this property, how do you then build it and not go broke collecting very low or extremely low or low-income rents on that property? It is, I would say, virtually impossible, but I don't know. I leave that to developers. I leave that to any of you who have had to do any developing of your home in the valley. But that's part of what is being faced here. And it's part of why the state says you can qualify as affordable housing with as little as 15% of the residential units in your development being affordable. And as I told the Democratic Club a few months ago, when Mr. Wirick and, and Mr. Seibert and I were there as a panel, affordable housing is a legal term. When you say it, if you want to get to a number of who can afford it, you have to say what class of income are we talking about? Moderate income? Low, very low, extremely low? And where? Because that legal term applies to the average income level in Ventura County as far as we're concerned. And moderate income is up to 120% of the average, within the average is what, 80,000 or something like that now? So moderate income, which is defined as affordable, is a family making 96,000 a year. Not very many gardeners, housekeepers such fall into that class, but by legal definition, it's affordable. So learn these things and be careful with what you say and what you ask for because the normal thought that's affordable is not something my yard guy can, can live in. That's not the legal term anymore. And I think I've probably said enough. Commissioner Lottis?
Yes, I, I think I did it on a lot of your comments. I, I think I feel that there are definitely issues with the proposed land uses that I'm quite concerned about the limited community workshop opportunities. The really, and that may have occurred during COVID. I think that was maybe part of the reason why it was hard to have a public outreach, and I understand that. But I think that the community came forth expressing their fierce pride and love of this amazing community. And they had tremendous ideas. So I feel that we've missed a real study identification and collaboration with the community in terms of what the real community needs are and that that needs, those community needs to, community needs need to be woven into whatever this project is. I think the housing issue is very important. And as Chair Qualsey talked about, the focus, the real need in this community is- the focus, the real need in this community is addressing very low and extremely low income in terms of housing. And we need to think hard about how we can do that and some kind of public, private partnership, perhaps something. We need to be creative about it. I'd like to see the attention and it, it came up tonight, the attention on resiliency, the why, I don't know why this, this project can't be more visionary. We need to be talking about lead platinum construction. Something where we, you know, let's reach for the stars. Let's really do what we need to do in terms of looking forward into the future. You know, we need to proceed carefully, I think, on this. Whatever we do, it's going to be standing there for the next 50 years, 100 years. And this is a cornerstone property for this community. It's so important and we need to, whatever we need, whatever we do, it needs to be worthy of that status in the community and nothing less. It's, I mean, I, I know I sounded a little cliche, but, but honestly, it's, it's what we have to strive for. So I was, I'm quite concerned about the scale of the project proposed. The lack of identification of community needs, the lack of commitment to very low and extremely low affordability on housing. I am very concerned about the impact on resources, particularly water resources. And the other impacts on the community in terms of traffic and parking. As well as other community resources. And by the way, I think there is no doubt that this project, when it comes to the correct, the is an actual project being submitted to the city. We're talking about an EIR here, nothing less. So I, I think that needs to be very clear. I think we need to respect and make sure we have a full assessment of the, this, the buildings as a historic resource. It's going to need to be very clear in terms of what's torn down and what's not, what, you know. We need, we'll need to have exact information about that. I think lastly, I'm a little concerned about the emphasis on the leasing. It seems like, I'm not an expert on this, although I've had a 30-year-plus career as a land use planner. Seems like you, you should have a project approved first and then go into the leasing agreement. And I am concerned about the developer qualifications and experience. It's a little outside the purview of what the Planning Commission looks at. But the devil is in the details. The devil is in execution of a project. And I, you know, if this, if what the community wants as a project is not what you as a developer can financially handle, and yet you have a leasing agreement, I hope there's some escape clauses, both for the school district as well as yourself. And I, I, we need to find the correct developer that will come up with the development that is correct for the city. And I think that's, you know, I'm just giving very conceptual comments tonight. But I think when the project, when a project comes in, we need very clear, very specific information on where the changes, what's there now, where the changes are occurring, what's being torn down, what's, what's new, what's old, what's being kept? And and really be creative about the kinds of uses to be integrated into the overall project. So I think that's.
I got a, just a couple, couple of things. I just wanted to reiterate what you guys said. That was great and thank you guys for all being here. This was amazing. I don't think I've ever been in a planning meeting like this. This is awesome. Wish they were all like this. Anyway, so I, I think you guys got the message from the community pretty loud and clear about the hotel. So I think you guys are probably going to think of some different ideas. I, I wrote down about 17 different ideas that came from, from the members of the community, I think are all fantastic and I think are all worth exploring. I was a part of the original planning session, I think 2019 is when you guys first proposed this. Yeah. That was part of that. We didn't have this type of turnout. I don't know if it was because there were just better communications this time around or, or what the outreach program was, but one thing that was kind of disconcerting is that there wasn't really any change in the overall concept from then to today. And obviously things have changed, you know. Pandemic, Thomas Fire, all kinds of stuff, but. So anyway, I, I would say just, you know, make sure that when, next time you come back around, whatever the proposal is, make sure that you are very clear on the why we're doing this. I think that this one of the things that I heard loud and clear is transparency. I think there's a lack of transparency between what the school district is trying to do and, and the purpose. Why? You know, why, why, why are they proposing this type of a project? You know, what kind of funds are needed? Just having that kind of general transparency to the public will help the public, you know, make a decision on his property. I mean, we're going to be tasked with potentially changing the zoning from a, a public use to a village mixed use or some other purpose. You know, and that can impact the city of Ojai for, you know, for hundreds of years or whatever it might be, right? Until someone changes that. So we just got to be very careful because we got to look at the long-term ramifications of whatever we do. So, you know, Ojai is a small town. It's only about four, 4.3 square miles, I think. We've got about 8,000 residents. Ojai Unified is serving the valley, which I think has 30,000 people roughly. So it's a big burden to put on our little town, you know. So we need to look at our infrastructure of a town. So we need to have an infrastructure study done. Something like a traffic study. We would need to see some sort of traffic study. I think an air quality study, looking at traffic impacts. I think we need to have a soil study done on the property to determine if there's been any sort of chemical issues from all of the maintenance and stuff that has gone on the site. I think there needs to be a water study done to determine how much water is going to be demanded from whatever development goes there. I think currently, according to Casitas Water District, as of September 15th, the demand on Lake Casitas is about 10,660 acre foot per year. That type of demand is estimated that the lake only has about five years left. So we need to be really careful with the water. I think if we do any sort of, you know, tourist type of idea, we need to have a tourist study done. We need to figure out, you know, what, what, what's the impact of all of the tourists coming to our city? And can we, can we fix our roads fast enough? Can we deal with the issues of the tourists coming in and the impacts that it does to our infrastructure? And can we repair those things quick enough? I don't know. So I, I think, I think that's what I have. I think, you know, come back with something that really helps us understand why we're doing this. You know, because this project is going to reshape our town for the good or the bad in one way or the another. So we need to be very clear on why we're doing it. So I think we need to do that. And then obviously we need to have all the, the studies done as well.
My name is Jamie Bennett. I'm new to this panel. It was a great meeting tonight. I was very apprehensive about anger and frustration boiling over. I think people were very articulate about what they're looking for. I was struck by the person who said, I look at this place as a commons. And it really is a good, good way or one, one of the good ways to look at this. Unfortunately, all, not all, but most of the things that are being suggested have costs and either inadequate or no revenues associated with them. The swimming pool, I, I think a municipal pool is a great idea and goodness knows it's not going to get cooler. I think we need a theater of quality in town. We are known for, for this. Our high school is, our theater, public theater, but we don't really have a decent theater in town. I think a commons for things like this, the, the market, I've been to the market now twice. It's great. But a place where we can set something up like that quickly and have a great experience. I know the schools need money. Public schools always need money. And I think that was why I had mentioned earlier, I, I'd called the superintendent schools a little earlier. I just said, I, I was interested in finding out how much money and for what, what difference would it make? You know, it was, let's say this thing throws off $500,000 a year or a million dollars a year. What would that do for the budget of the school system? And that's got to be, that's got to be made apparent to people. So otherwise they're just looking at it and they're saying, it's a 200-room hotel. It's the wrong way that I think about, about it. I, I don't think we need more shops or restaurants frankly, but because the ones that are there are all suffering. We're about to have four new restaurants in a year. Do you believe that, folks? We, for the first time, I'm not going to go to a dinner party and talk about when are we going to get a decent new restaurant in town? It's great, but I do, but I, I do think that we we need new housing, you need additional housing stock. And I think for the personnel, you know, worker housing is a, is a, is a category of housing where you can get, you can get support for that. And I think we really need that. I mean, there's no question that we can't, if you go into a restaurant in town, they'll all tell you, like, you know anybody who wants to work here? You know, everybody has got open jobs. There are, there's not a lot of unemployment in that sector. And, and the reason that there's not a lot of people there is they're, you know, they can't afford to live here. So, and housing is the big, is the big driver on that. It seems to me we need more planning, you know, it's funny, but the, you know, it's interesting, your, your planning discipline is your career. But as I was listening to, I was thinking, you know, we've just sort of jumped into it. And as I read the minutes from the meetings from night, from 2019, you know, it was, it was just sort of the same, the, the, the audience was saying we need affordable housing. So it's a little affordable housing. And I didn't say, we need a little this, a hotel was in there. But I didn't think that there was any process or planning process, which is what. And, and maybe, and I don't take this personally, but you know, we got this mysterious developer, I mean, who doesn't have a website. And maybe they don't have the right skill, skill sets on, in the, in, on the team. You know, let's, let's face it. This, this thing needs a couple of things. One, it needs a good planner. Now, I didn't see the, the planner except the developer himself, who's got to be a planner, but you know, somebody who's skilled and has run a process and, and would have run a process here tonight. So I, there's that. I'm not sure that there's a decent designer in there. Again, I don't want to insult. But yeah, we don't know anything about the design skills of this group. And you look at the wonderful architects Ojai has, has drawn to it over the years. There's a wonderful book in the library now that was published recently here about the, the fabulous architecture in town. You know, we don't know who the architect is. There's nothing to inspire us. No one talked about, we want to build beautiful buildings. You know, this is a beautiful city. It's got natural beauty and it's got built beauty. And we didn't talk about having any kind of a design aspiration of, of, in this. So I look at it and say, I don't know if we got the right developer. Does he have deep enough pockets for something this big? And are we going to wind up in the middle of it and he, and it's taking longer and he's running out of money? I mean, I, I don't know. Because I, I don't, I, you know, I'm sure the, the process was run by the school board back in the day and I come to this very late. But it's, it's, it's concerning to me that I don't know why we've chosen this developer and, and with all the developers and more importantly, all the architects that we could reach to in, in, in the Southern California region or other regions. And there are architects who are specialized in converting schools into something where the school is the most important historic asset in the town. So there are people who are doing this up in, in Washington and Oregon. And I just, I don't have any sense that we have aspired the excellence in, in design and planning in this, in this. And as my colleague just said, you know, this is, this is the other cap. You know, we have a, a cap on the west where we've got the post office tower and the theater and the soon to be reopened, I hope, El Robar Hotel, all of which are signature buildings by important architects who are working together and collaboratively and, and most in the same firm. And at this end, this is going to be the eastern cap of the main street there. And so we've got to make sure it's worthy of that. And, 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 you know, we need to be inspired. That's the thing. There's no inspiration tonight. It was just like, oh, squeeze this in here and that and there and so many parts. But it's like, where's the magic? And I think it's going to be hard to get a vote without inspiring people. And I don't mean a vote from this panel. I just mean a, a support by the community. That's all I got.
Chair Quilisi?
Last but not least, our vice chair, Kathy Nolan. Your thoughts?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the Ojai community for showing up tonight. I think that's one of the things that's so special about our community is there's a lot of passion. And, and people show up when they need to. Thank you. I appreciate that. I also wanted to say that I concur with my fellow commissioners and some of the things I may be saying, because I'm going last, maybe a duplication. I'll try to keep it, those things brief. I also wanted to say I was a little surprised tonight. Oh, not just tonight, but when I got my packet, that there wasn't really much different from the presentation that was done a few years ago and I happened to be there and I commented. So I'm not sure how much, you know, transpired between now and then. I was a little surprised that you came with one option tonight, which wasn't really well received by the, the community. And then at the same time, there wasn't enough information or there was some misinformation as far as like the, the parking counts and there could have been, you know, more information about ingress, egress, about more about the housing, more about the architecture and what have you. I don't need to go into all the details. But I also want to say thank you for at least saying what we were presenting tonight is not set in stone and that we do want community collaboration. So to me, that feels very hopeful. And, you know, I think where I'm coming from and I'm, I'm hearing from a lot from the community is that you know, we understand that the school district has the financial needs. We also know that the community needs. And it's somewhat, it's looking at a balance, not just what our needs are, but what, you know, what the codes are, what the school district needs, what everybody needs. And how can we work together collaboratively? How can we come together? And as a community and to create something spectacular on that side. And I wish you had started with going to the community first. But I would suggest kind of deconstructing what happened tonight. And start by going out and, you know, getting stakeholder input, you know, through a charrette or something similar. Because a lot of really good ideas came up tonight. A lot of them I had and I heard the community members say them. There's so many opportunities for the commons as Commissioner Bennett had mentioned and others. So that it really becomes a hub for the community. To the best of your ability, if you could step back a little bit from the tourism, I do understand that that's, you know, our largest form of our economy for, for Ojai. It's what brings the money in. But if we could create more jobs for the locals there and also an income for the school district, that would be great. I, I definitely would like to see once again more live work or workforce or family housing or even some senior housing. So in other words, a real good mix of housing for, you know, be it families, singles, working people and what have you. Mentioned the jobs, I mentioned the housing. I'm just looking at my notes real quick here, creating, also, yeah, creating just an alternate revenue stream other than a hotel. Or if it came down to a hotel, it would be very small and scalable. Also, the full transparency. I, I also did a search early on and I couldn't find the developer. Then I was going, I didn't have any information, which I typically like to have at the beginning. And then full disclosure on, once again, the school needs, the school budget. So that basically everyone in the community knows what's going on and we're all on the same page. And then, once again, full community inclusion. I do realize that no matter what you do there, the parking, the traffic, water are all going to be half, are going to be have to looked at, or excuse me, please, because I haven't had dinner yet. They're going to have to look, look at that and do further studies, obviously. Super important. And I know Chair Quillisi mentioned about the water issue. A lot of our downtown area has a very high water table, but that's something you'll explore, especially if you're talking about indoor rail parking. Another concern that I had is the historical context. Commissioner Laws had mentioned that early on too, and I, I want to say I agree with that. And I would also include looking at the kindergarten buildings that were built in nineteen fifty-three and they have a lot of historical context as well. And also how those buildings could be adaptively reused. Consider that. You do mention in your, in our report, on our packet, there's some talk about sustainability with water and sustainable kind of wellness. You didn't go into much detail, but I would highly encourage that. And I know it's a challenge. I, I know I'm a landscape architect and so many projects I work on, there's always value engineering. And a lot of times those things get cut. But if there's any way to do it, I highly, highly encourage you to do it. It's really for the good of the community. So whether it's methods, materials in the development, consider a sustainability and resiliency. And let me see, I think, oh yeah, I think I'm pretty good on the comments for the moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. And to kind of summarize, and, and I hope I didn't come across as just lecturing about being accurate in what we say. But I think you can see, and we've had probably fifty planning commission meetings worth of people here tonight. So you can see there's a lot of, there's a lot of passion in this community. And there's a lot of people that would like to help. The, the idea that you brought forward tonight kind of clunked when you brought it forward. But there are people here who I am sure would be happy to work with you. You can explain the economics to them of whatever it is that people think they would like to see built. And they can explain to you the value of what they would like to see built. And I think that that kind of a dialogue is bound to produce some good results. I do thank everyone for being here tonight. I thank the developers and, and the school board representatives that are here. Sorry, we couldn't see them all. For being here tonight and facing up to what turned out to be, you know, verging on the order of torches and pitchforks at times tonight. But the fact is, you're getting an idea of the kind of passion that is in this community. And besides the people who just said, no, 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 development, there are people here who want to help, who want to do what's right for Ojai and want to work with you to do what's right for Ojai. So I urge you to reach out to the community more. This was a good start. Maybe didn't come across as a good start, but it was a good start in that you wanted to talk to the community and hear from the community. And we need more of that.
Thank you. And on behalf of the school district, on behalf of the school district, it is a good start. And I appreciate all of your comments. And I'm not just saying that. We will take them back to the school board and Commissioner Trent, all of the funds are going to go to programs, all of them, programs and facilities and for the kids. And that should have been a front probably a lot earlier in the game. So we're going to work with the community. We're going to recommend that to the district. And your, your comments are very well taken, all of you. And I appreciate it.
Thank you. And the community. Thank you very much. We usually go through a, a little item here where individual commissioners and then city staff, if you have anything else you'd like to bring up at this meeting, on topic, off topic, whatever, let's do that right now before we adjourn.
I have one little thing.
Go ahead, John.
One little, one little comment. Currently, we're going through a, a general plan update. You guys know the general plan is usually twenty years or so, vision of Ojai, future of Ojai, what we want the city to be. I think it would be awesome if we had some participation from Ojai Unified School District there as well. I think, you know, they're obviously a big player in the city of Ojai. So it would be nice to have them as part of the general plan update.
Absolutely. Thank you. Jamie, please hope to be part of that.
I went to the MAC meeting this week and they miss you. You're welcome back again if you want to do it next time. But what was really surprising, and I told them, them about this meeting and that it was coming up and they seemed actually quite interested in it. And the, the meeting was dominated by traffic issues in the, in the downhill side of thirty-three, the thirty-three quarter. And, you know, we, we tend to hear talk about traffic problems and how they're generated by tourists, which may or may not be more or less true depending on who you are and where you live. They, I'll, I'll use they, all the people who were talking in this meeting. And these are people from Miramonte and Casita Springs.
Miners Oaks.
And Miners Oaks, not Miners Oaks, but, but they, they think the traffic is generated by our commutes. It's by not, not tourists, but our residents who go flying through their community on their way to work and they come flying back at the end of the day. And they don't, no one mentioned tourism. And it's interesting because here you hear nothing but tourism. And it's just sort of an interesting twist. Now, they're still working through and have a long way to go on this question of speed limits that, that they, they've begun to change on the thirty-three.
Vice Chair Nolan, any last thoughts?
Do you mind if I just acknowledge after sitting through that, that, that I heard them? I mean, I think it might be helpful for people to know that I heard.
Yes, please go ahead, sir.
I especially wanted to catch Trevor before he split as well. But yeah, listen, we, we hear you loud and clear. I hear everything you've said. It's super interesting. You're absolutely right. I'm not going to justify any of the missteps we, we made, but I, but I heard them all. I, I know that this is not all about money, but to the extent that it is, it should go to the kids, not me, not the board. I know that tourism is killing this town. People can't afford to live here. There's a lack of trust and transparency. There's a lack of community involvement. We need better jobs and hotel jobs. Back to the drawing board. I know water and other constraints are weighed heavily and need to be taken into account, parking, traffic. I know there's a need for affordable housing, not just more housing, but specifically housing for locals and teachers. I, I, I know that people want a technical school and senior housing, native involvement, Chumash involvement. I know traffic is gridlocked. I know the scale of this is too much seemingly. And retail is not the highest and best use and we need to think bigger. Just a few things in, like, it's hard enough with, without misinformation. So to the extent we can, we will retool this and try to get community involvement, which will take a long time and that's understood. And perhaps this commission could, could help with that. In our mind, this was the first opening of this process. We, we didn't intend it to be one option. I thought that was clear at the outset, but it's worth restating. Everything is on the table as far as this project goes. The historic designation, we, we just didn't do a good job. Historic, we are totally going to, excuse me, observe the historic landmark status. And that was a huge part of the appeal, frankly. Resiliency, we do talk a lot about solar and gray water in our, in our materials. I'm also pioneering a material called Air Crete, which you could look into. It's a fireproof insulation. It absorbs more CO2 over its lifetime than it takes to create. It's truly fantastic. So that's very near and dear to our hearts. With respect to notice, you know, I am a former planning commissioner. I am a developer. I've never seen a project where we were agendized and put before a planning commission without even being told. We found out we were on the agenda when you found out. So I don't know how or why that happened, but it was pretty unfair to all of us, I guess. We did say, Trevor, that at least has not been signed yet. I mean, it's tough enough to do what we do without misrepresenting what we actually say. I'm perfectly happy to engage on the facts and, believe me, you have plenty of facts on your side. So you don't need things that are false to be on your side. S V S is just the three of us. There's no subterfuge. The, the RFP was an open process. You know, I went to Stanford undergrad. I went to Cal grad school. Every project I've ever done has started out with the odds stacked way against me and I've pulled them off. So I know we can do it. We have a really talented team. Brad is our architect and he didn't get a chance to really speak tonight because we wanted to prioritize public input. And frankly, I think it was a good use of time because no matter what we would talk about with respect to the weeds of this plan, what we heard was, was more important. So another thing is that, that our one local partner who does live here did meet with a Chumash elder on this property a few times. And, and that's definitely something we're going to take into account. And the other thing I would say is, you know, I, I would just like people to be realistic about all the problems that this state and this world has. This project, you know, probably can't solve them all. So we'll, we'll work to, to do the best we can to solve the problems we, we can solve. But, but trust me, I heard you and, and thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any last go rounds with the city staff? Lucas or Matt or James?
Thank you. I just wanted to, to make a clarification on one point that Brian had said. And that is the applicant had the opportunity not to have this meeting. They chose, which then provided us the notification to the, the paper. So it's not that they weren't aware. They were certainly aware and they made that choice to move forward. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, we were agendized to be on the school board hearing same night before this. And so then the school board told us that they wanted us to do this instead. So we did that. We're just, just full transparency. And it's.
Anything from Matt?
The final comment would be again to thank the community for coming out and support. And, and to note, as, as is clear, the next steps on the city side will be, at this time, nothing unless and until we receive a revised submittal from the applicant and/or the property owner, at which point we will process any submittal as it comes in. And without alternative management, any final comments?
Thank you to the community for coming out and we'll make sure to keep everybody informed of next steps. So thank you very much.
All right. And with that, then at, what is it? Nine forty-five, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.